Good morning. I'd like to call a meeting to order since we have quorum. Members of the public are advised that our meeting is a webcast live by the City of Hamilton temporarily archived on its city's website. Other individuals and media may also be audibly and visually recording this meeting. And as a reminder, all electronic devices should be switched to a non-audible mode during all committee meetings. Madam Clerk, any changes to the agenda?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. We had, I had added item 9.1 and 9.2, motions respecting the feasibility of adjusting HSR fares and the addition of HSR to the general levy. However, councillor Marula has requested that they be put on the February 25 council agenda instead, so the agenda is before you as presented.
Thank you, Stephanie. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Councillor Pearson, councillor Green, all in favor? Any declarations of interest this morning? Seeing none. Right on to presentations, staff presentations, Public Health Services. Dr. Richardson will begin the presentation for Public Health. Dr. Richardson, please. Councillor Johnson?
Yeah, I was just reading the, jumped ahead to the last page and there's a 0% increase, correct, Dr. Richardson? What it says. Oh, never mind. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good morning, Dr. Richardson.
A pleasure to be here this morning. We'll, we'll be going through the slides. As you know, I'll be presenting the whole presentation and, but the directors are here to answer any questions relevant to the divisions. I will let you know for the Planning and Business Improvement Division, unfortunately, Michelle Baird, who's the acting director, was not able to be here. She's off ill. And we, was an unexpected thing. And so if, we'll do our best to answer any questions you have about that one, but we may need to say that we'll get back to you if there's some really detailed questions about that particular division. But hopefully, we can answer it all. So just looking at the slide, you can't hear? Let me see if I can get closer. That better? Okay. I've got your attention now. So just looking at the SDR slide. So you can see that Public Health Services supports the programs around the foundational standards, so the epidemiologic work we do and others, chronic disease and injury prevention, environmental health, infectious diseases, emergency preparedness and family health. And then the departmental support services around the organizational standards. So that's all of the things that we're required to do around planning, policies, human resources is also there, finance and administration and information services. So we're going to go through and give you some highlights from 2014. And those are organized, of course, according to the strategic plan. And pleased to share a whole number of things that happened in the last year. So the first, of course, under the prosperous and healthy community was the decision to move downtown. And our phase one of our move to the Robert Thompson Building, which brought the staff over from the Houston Street location, the staff from Dundas, and the staff from Stony Creek, happened in April, May of this past year. And it's been a really exciting move in time for us because, of course, it wasn't just about moving and getting, you know, appropriate office space in the case of RTB, but it was also about changing the way we did our work. And so there's been a lot of work that has been done to do things like now have a face-to-face reception area so that when people come into our organization, they don't walk in, see locked doors with a sheet on the wall that says, you know, if you need something that happens to be in language that suits our understanding of things, this is where you go. So now we have a receptionist who's available on the, on the second floor of Robert Thompson to help people out. We now have as well, our centralized inventory management has begun. We had inventory that was out in all the different offices, and you can imagine that leads to inefficiencies in terms of supplies. And especially, my favorite example is always when you switched over from doing overheads on those projectors with markers and stuff, and then we switched over to doing everything electronically. So when we were cleaning out, we had stacks of those overheads, which if you remember at the time, were fairly expensive. But everybody just had a few as you made that transition. But once you got all those offices together, it's quite a stack. And so that's now we can manage our supplies with being centralized and centralized inventory so that we're not getting those kinds of little stacks everywhere, but rather working through things. So we expect to see further efficiencies around that in the, in the longer term. Right now, we're just looking at common items, and then we'll move forward further. We did successfully introduce hoteling and telecommuting. And I have to tell you, particularly with Dorothy Barr, who's sitting up there from Family Health who led this, this was a huge change in the way we do work. And so it was one of the things we said, if we're going to work within a smaller footprint, we couldn't have everybody have desks and things the way we did before. And as well, we recognize that a lot of our staff actually, they're about delivering services in the community. So that the time that they need to come into the office, either to download information or to come to meetings, or just because we want to see them at the beginning and the end of the day, that's not providing the kind of clients that we're looking for. And so we have reorganized our business so that we have about 40% of our workforce now hoteling. So they're out, they don't have a desk in the office, there's shared desks that they can use when they need to come in. They have more technology, lighter weight laptops, their BlackBerries with hotspots so that they can work remotely anywhere, whether it's in a Tim Hortons coffee shop using the BlackBerry hotspot because it has to be secure, or in, you know, one of our municipal service centers, anywhere like that. And so a few of our colleagues in Public Works or different places where staff now kind of show up and say, can I have a seat? Do you mind? They're kind of surprised to see us. We've been through some changes associated with that as well. But we've definitely seen increased productivity in terms of working with our community, improved customer service, and with our ability to quickly access online resources and work issues through, reduce travel for staff, and improve job satisfaction. And there was a lot of angst, as you can imagine, as they made this change. Nobody sort of gives up their desk and their home base and, and all their colleagues and being there every day sort of without some feelings of loss. And so there's a fair amount of angst going into it. But staff, you know, embraced it, went forward, and they've been very pleased with, with the ability to be out there doing their work and supported in doing that. The last thing is that we'll be going into, the last phase of the move, phase two, we'll be going, of course, into the building across the street with McMaster. And ultimately, that brings downtown the 450 McMaster jobs and the 54,000 McMaster clinic visits, which was much the reason for moving there. For us, we'll bring a further 200 jobs downtown from the mountain. And we now have our permanent dental clinic down here as well. That's up and running. I'll talk more about that in a minute, with 3,500 visits through that clinic and 1,500 through the van. And then we'll have 4,600 sexual health clinics that'll be visits that will be relocated here to the McMaster Centre. The neighbourhood action plans, you know, you've heard a lot about this, I know, from Community Emergency Services and Paul in his former role now, and Suzanne. For us, it's a huge part of our, of our work. And we take part in about 47% of all of the action planning that happens through those neighbourhood plans. And there's some really interesting examples. I'll just hit on two. You know, ones that you maybe wouldn't have expected. But we have in place these social determinants of health services that are, that are funded by the province. And they're out there to look at the underlying issues that are affecting people. And they're working with the neighbourhoods on the Canada Learning Bond. So this is federal program that provides money to kids in need for their future education. And our participation rate was very low. And the nurses have been working with the communities, with people in the communities to understand the process, simplify it, get access to it so that they, these kids in the communities can have access to more funding for education. So that's just a really good example of an unexpected project. There's many things that we do with them. Much of it is our usual work that we work along with them. An example is our links to schools. And there's a lot of alignment between the neighbourhood strategy and our school strategy. And we have dedicated public health nurses in all of the high schools. And many of those high schools are within the neighbourhood action strategy. And they participate on a variety of issues. In the elementary schools, the primary focus right now is around healthy eating and physical activity. In the secondary schools, the primary focus is around mental health. Of course, that encompasses everything from bullying, violence prevention, those sorts of things. But mental health is really the underlying issue. But we support the schools to work on things like community gardens at the school, school travel plans, to encourage active and safe routes to schools, all of those different Also, under this part of the strategic plan was our work that we did around what we call HOPE, the Hamilton overdose and prevention education. And this, this is the program where we took naloxone, which is a special opiate, as we call it, a special drug, which can be used to treat people who've had an overdose with narcotics or to diagnose an overdose with narcotics. Because if somebody's OD'd and you're not sure what it is, you give them this, they get better, you now know what they, what they had had. So this is now put this into the hands of people who are either with or are the people who have a propensity, a risk of overdosing. And we launched that, of course, last year in May. We've had a number of people using the kits by this point. And we also, it was very timely because we had that increase in, in deaths last year with the police in last July, that we were very glad to get more of these out on the street and be part of preventing overdoses. We've changed how we do needle pickup. And this is in part, you saw this too on the neighbourhood action strategy slide. We did two different things. One is that we worked across the corporation to say, guys, you don't need to call us to pick up needles that you find, you know, on a street corner or wherever it is. Whoever's closest to it can safely pick those up. And so we did a lot of work around policies and training with staff across the corporation about how to do so safely. So that rather than wait till one of our inspectors could get there on a weekday, whoever's standing right by and noticed them or been called can go ahead and pick them up and get them out of the community right away. The other is the work that we do, and we do this work through Public Health Services and with the Van Programme with private property. So these are individuals who in the morning wake up and they find needles on their front lawn. You know, what do they do? And of course, unfortunately, we have some areas in the community where that happens on a regular basis. It's not just something that happens once. And so we have, the Van Programme goes out and it does sweeps in neighbourhoods where there are higher number of these occurrences on a regular basis to make sure the needles are cleaned up. But they also, if there's a phone call, they go, they go to the house, they show them how to clean them up. They give them education so that if this happens again, they can do so safely and they don't need to wait for us to get there. But this has been something that we planned with the community and it's been a successful program. I mentioned already the dental clinic, and I'll talk a little bit more about it. This is a, it's been really great for our staff. They, they now have both on the bus and in the clinic itself, state-of-the-art equipment. They have, you know, digital imaging x-rays. They have electronic health records. They have as well, the ability, they have screens within the treatment rooms so that they can put up for the clients their, their x-rays and things so they can actively involve them in the treatment planning and help them understand what the issues are that they're dealing with. On the, on the more operational side, we've now got appropriate space so we can separate clean and dirty instruments more appropriately. That was a concern for us in our old space. And so they're very happy to have that, that space. And it's a, it's a bright, you know, exterior facing just across the street at, at Robert Thompson. And as I said, we've got about 3,500 people coming to that clinic every year. Our health system navigators, we've done a couple of things. One is with the McQueston neighbourhood. We've had Rachel Hallbrum, who's been working with a physician's office there about how can they support them in working with their community. And she's done a lot of great work. And you heard a lot about that in previous presentations. And I'm sure you'll hear more about it when we finish that evaluation and bring that back later this year. The bedbug nurse navigator was one we put in place temporarily for a year when we, there was a report that came forward, I think it was in July of last year, to look at this bedbug issue and how to move forward on a more comprehensive basis. So there's a strategy that's being planned that's going to come back by the end of this year, which Community Emergency Services is leading. And we've put in place, because our inspectors were getting tied up in looking at these, these issues, because it's not a simple issue of yes, bedbug, yes, treat. It's working with people often who have challenges in dealing with landlords, financial challenges, whatever it may be, just difficulty moving about and having to do the moves that are required to effectively treat for bedbugs. So this nurse navigator works with those clients to access the, the care resources, the financial resources, the, you know, help to negotiate with landlords, whatever it needs to be in order to get the treatment done effectively. One additional piece, of course, was our, what's called the EpiPen initiative, I shouldn't use that word, it's the epinephrine auto-injector, but it's so much more difficult to say, initiative in Jackson Square. And so this is where we worked with some concerned members from Ancaster Rotary, AM Rotary, and some drug companies that were out there to do this pilot project with McMaster and look at whether getting epinephrine out in the community would help to reduce either death or, or just illness associated with anaphylaxis, which we know has been increasing. So that's been launched. We've had a great success in training the mall security guards to be the ones to carry these and have access to them. They have been used twice in terms of, or sorry, they've been asked for requests for assistance twice, but they've not, the guards have not decided to use the device themselves. It wasn't warranted in the situation, which is good. They're making good decisions about what to do. And so that's the stage right now. And we're looking at having that evaluated and come back later this year. Mental health and addictions, this has been a toughie in some ways because it's clearly an underlying issue, clearly a significant issue that underlines a lot of the work we actually do in the city. And you'll hear me say this a lot, when you're looking at issues around relations, different things that happen, a lot of the work that we do, positive mental health is a significant contributor to that. And so we had some staff work on a framework to inform our future initiatives and approach. And we're going to be looking at taking that forward in a couple of ways. And I'll talk about that more in one minute. But we also did some work on the provincial level. And this gets back to the question that always gets put to us about, are we taking the lead? Are we the ones that are out there? Why aren't we coordinating with other health units? And there's a real system now to coordinate across the province on projects. It's called the locally driven collaborative projects initiative that Public Health Ontario runs. And so local health units get together on common issues of concern, and they fund the top, however many the funding will allow. This is the old teaching health unit funding, really, that's gone to this. And the, this is the project that was important to us around children and youth, what are the best practices for child and youth mental health promotion? And we've been doing that with Thunder Bay and Halton, I believe it is, that we've been working on that one. The results of that one are expected to come forward in 2015. Sorry, it's London Middlesex where Chris Mackey is, that we've been working on that. The youth alcohol harm reduction program was also implemented. You'll remember the Skinner inquest, timely councillor Partridge with you coming in, just as we're talking about Skinner. And, you know, the Skinner inquest, the sad circumstances around that teen's death, and the committee that was formed, the inquest committee, with the two school boards, the Hamilton Police and McMaster's Children's Hospital as well of ourselves, we've been working on a social marketing campaign to modify the drinking culture in kids from five to seventeen, or sorry, 15 to 17. And that's set to be launched this May. We also started, when we had looked at our school programming responsibilities, we realized we were kind of missing out on the college and university students, which is a group that we're targeting. We were focused more on elementary and secondary schools. And so this past year, we did this Got Your Back campaign. And involves a sticker that you can place on the back of your cellphone. It's just, I don't know what you call it when it's not really sticky, but it's kind of friction attached. And you can take it, it's a screen cleaner. But it reminds that, reminds kids a couple, about a couple of things associated with alcohol in that really high-risk period of those college years. Things about how alcohol affects you, how it affects your friends, how it affects your social relationships, and that friends help friends in circumstances where alcohol is involved and nobody should be left alone. So that has been targeted to Mohawk and McMaster students with more than 7,000 educational and promotional materials distributed. And we're going to be evaluating that as well in September to see how that's, that's gone. I can tell you, I asked Ellen for a couple of these stickers and put them on the back of my cellphone. I mean, I was thinking as much for the screen cleaner as anything else. And my teens saw me, they're like, what's on the back of your phone, mom? And I said, oh, it was a great opportunity to talk to them about alcohol and about, you know, some of the issues. And I'm, you know, as a parent of teen, I'm as aware of anybody about the realities of dealing with alcohol and, you know, the differences and ideas around it that are out there in our community. And so it's just, just even that was a great opportunity to raise awareness. And a couple of them took it and put them on their phones. And so I want to go back and ask them, so, lead any conversations? But we'll see, we'll see how far mom can get with that one. The next piece is about the HealthLinks collaborative. So you've heard us talk about HealthLinks. HealthLinks came and presented last year, and we'll ask them to come back and present again this year. They've been focusing on what they call these two collaborative. So getting together and working around two areas where they saw the highest need. One again was mental health and addictions. And so this is another way that we've been working on it going forward. And so they're looking at doing care planning for those who are at greatest risk of ending up in a merge and coordinating care planning against, around all the agencies that are involved. And as well, working on the frail and elderly as a, a priority. Environmental health issues, as you know, significant issues for us. Our air quality task force here in Hamilton reported back last year and gave us a number of recommendations, which we're working on implementing. The first of those was to get a, an airshed model in place for Hamilton so we could really accurately look at where's the, where are the issues happening? Where's pollution a challenge? Where do we have good air quality? And we got private partnership funding to do that, and that's underway and being developed. We've also installed two new movable air monitors, of course, in Ward 5. And they're doing real-time monitoring, which is feeding into the Hammond network. The Community Climate Change Action Plan is underway and going through its stakeholder and community engagement process, which is great work that is being done by Brian and, and others in Rob's shop. We're expecting a Board of Health report back on that in 2015. The Corporate Climate Change Action Plan has also become part of Public Health's responsibility. And we're leading that with a group from across the entire corporation, from Public Works, from Planning and Act Dev, and looking at how we move forward. In that case, we've brought some very inexpensive software. It's called a climate change adaptation vulnerability and risk assessment tool. And we're looking at that to both support the corporate plan as well as the community plan now, and then to coordinate those two together so that they, they're, they're working together. There is an enhancement, GO9, which you'll see in your package, which will be discussed. I think now that's at the end of February, we're going to be doing enhancements. And you'll hear more about that in that package. Lastly, of course, last year was our, on this slide, was our Improving Health by Design report. So this was a report Nintran did with the Greater Toronto and Hamilton area Medical Offices of Health, looking at issues of transportation, built, built environment, pollution, all those various things. Looked at, you know, the costs every year for obesity and physical inactivity, you know, $4 billion per year, $550 million, and 12,500 new cases of diabetes due to physical activity, inactivity each year, 850 premature deaths and thousands of hospitalizations because of traffic-related air pollution. So that was debated at the Board of Health last year. It did come to council, and there was some concern around the positioning on the transit issue. And so that was referred back to committee, and that will be coming And so that was referred back to committee, and that will be coming back later on this year after further discussion with our new Director of Transit. We are, though, working on the other initiatives that were within that, that involve planning and Public Works, and so you'll hear more about that in the future as well. Next priority area was valuable and sustainable services. And so we've been doing a few things in that area. They've largely come under the heading of continuous service improvement. So we've been doing our e-health initiatives. It's a big deal for us. We're very paper-based in many areas still. It's not a good system to be paper-based. And so we've been slowly moving to an electronic medical record, which we call Oscar, which we're doing collaboratively with McMaster. It's an open soft software system that they developed, and we've been implementing it across different parts of our organization. So this past year, we got it implemented in our sexual health clinics. Panorama was also implemented. This is the province-wide vaccine recording software system that really was designed to go well beyond that, but so far, we've only got the vaccine piece implemented. Huge changes when you move from one system to another system for staff and the implementation, especially when it's driven and needs to suit 36 health units across Ontario, as well as the central government and Public Health Ontario. So they're big, big changes for us, and we got that launched this past year. We've been working on our performance measurement system, and this is really looking to go beyond the provincial performance targets that we have, both through the Accountability Agreement indicators for public health, as well as the specific ones for other funded programs, so that we really have a whole suite of indicators of both need and impact of our programs right across the board with our 42 programs. And I'll come back to that when I'm talking about 2015 initiatives. We did four program evaluations this past year, one for the Waterdown Sexual Health Clinic, which was finished this year. The school immunization program was done, and that was the subject of a, was included in an August Board of Health report last year, where we refocused from broad flu clinics to more focused work in schools, around the school-delivered programs and high-risk groups for flu. We evaluated the Good to Go Food Box, which was brought back as well last fall, and we're evaluating the Hope program that I mentioned earlier. Engaging and informing citizens and stakeholders, another part of valuable and sustainable services, indeed, it's just part of the way that we do do our work. Here's just some examples of things that we did this last year that really involved a lot of consultation and work with citizens and stakeholders. Everything from the three-color food inspection disclosure card system that got launched in January, to the Food Summit, which took place just this past fall and went out and involved stakeholders, about 100 people attended, to talk about action planning around food. Healthy birth weight, this is a fantastic example. There's a coalition that's been developed around low birth weight, and it is working to look at how do we improve care planning and those sorts of things for particularly young women who are in financial need. And it's a great program. It went ahead and hired the young mums that were involved to develop the care pathway and design the services. And it's not often that these young mums get to tell the docs and the agencies and everybody else how they think the services should be organized and what we should be doing in order to support them better. And that's exactly what happened with this initiative. And a great example, too, of supporting some of our program graduates, these were often women who had gone through our programs and graduated from them, and we're now actively shaping how to navigate the services better. There are more than 40 community agencies involved, including the hospitals and others. The Needle Pickup Program that I mentioned earlier engaged the community and the project, and how do we do it, where do the sweeps need to happen, that sort of thing. We hosted, again, the International Upwind Downwind Conference in February with a focus on the built environment, which is a community and broader conference, and then the community consultations around, let's talk about the weather, Community Climate Change Action Plan that I mentioned earlier. In leadership and governance, Krista's talked a lot about moving toward a culture of accountability and engagement. And as part of that broader corporate initiative, each of the departments has developed action plans around how they're working to improve our cultures within the organization. Ours focused on, we chose to complete a survey called the Dennison, which measures employee engagement across the organization and allows us to compare ourselves to both private and public sector organizations, actually around the world. They have international participants. And we wanted to get a picture, a snapshot of where our culture was today and what our staff say. So this goes out, surveys all the staff, asks them both some standardized questions and some open-ended questions to get their feedback, and then engage them in a discussion around what does it mean and what can we do to improve. So that took place last year, and we're just developing that action plan. Glenda MacArthur has been leading the Organizational Effectiveness Committee that's been working on that, and we'll be talking a little further about what we're doing this year. The Performance Accountability and Development Program, so this is changing how we do performance appraisals, and really changing so that we do see this as performance and accountability, as well as development throughout the year with staff. And our leadership team implemented the new tool that is being used, and we're, of course, going to be taking that forward further with staff this coming year. PANAM is a significant initiative for us as well. We know it is for a number of people, Public Works primarily, but also for us. And you did have a presentation last year about where that was going. And we've been working with the City of Hamilton Emergency Management Plan to develop plans specific for that event. We've also hosted a health sector exercise around PANAM. We've participated in a provincial exercise. We've had both a PANAM and a PANAM health-specific exercise. We've contributed, they're going to harmonize the heat alert system across the province, or across the areas that are affected, so we all manage it, or at least call the alerts in a similar way. We can then manage it suits our community. And they actually largely base the system around what we have here in Hamilton, so some really great foundational work. And the last on the list is the Board of Health Self-Evaluation, which I mentioned in the orientation, which we'll talk about a little bit more as well at our next Board of Health meeting. But that was the first time we had undertaken that at the beginning of last year. So moving forward into 2015, wanted to share with you this diagram. And we stepped back in 2013 as a leadership team within public health services and said, you know, the pressures that are upon everybody, not just ourselves, but looking at fiscally, what are the issues? The pressures from the aging of the population, the pressures of different parts of the healthcare system having to move in and out of different parts of their work. We stepped back and said, how do we need to think about our work going forward? Where do we see ourselves going over the next 10 years? And we gathered together information from across the country, and B.C. and Nova Scotia are really the two provinces that are both looking at this most from a future perspective, as opposed to how do we get through the next year or two? And as well, looking at it from the standpoint of how do we do it with other partners, and so not just standalone about what's public health doing. So we paid a lot of attention to what B.C. and Nova Scotia did. We also looked, of course, across the province and what they were doing. But this particular pyramid really captured for us a lot of information and made a lot of sense in terms of us thinking about what we need to do going forward. So there's two real themes. One was this one, the health impact pyramid, and the second one was about really focusing on what we have the mandate to do and what we do well. So this health impact pyramid, I don't know why I keep saying period, shows that if you look down this, there's sort of more, going down the pyramid, there's more and more population impact. So in terms of improving the health of the population, the more you're working at the base, you're actually going to have a greater impact. At the same time, the closer you are to the top of the pyramid, the more individual effort is required to make those changes when we're talking about from a worker perspective. Now, we all know that changing socioeconomic factors, which is the base of the pyramid, isn't something that's done overnight with one person talking about it. But from a public health perspective and the impact, if we're focusing there, we can get a lot more impact for a lot more people than providing individual counseling and education. So it argues that we should be focusing more of our efforts towards things like socioeconomic issues, like I talked about the determinants of health, changing the context to make individuals' default decisions healthy, so the work that we do around healthy public policy, long-lasting protective interventions like immunization and screening, those sorts of things. Whereas more clinical interventions, like treating somebody within a sexual health clinic, really is less effective on a broader scale, but important to those individuals. So let me just give you a couple of concrete examples. So if I focus in on tobacco for a minute, we work at all kinds of levels in there, and you hear us say often that it's important that we do work at those levels. So towards the top of the pyramid, we provide smoking cessation counseling. So we work with individuals, one-on-one in our clinics, to do smoking cessation counseling, and we really try to focus our work on the vulnerable clients that are hard for others to reach. We do SFOA and Smoke Free Ontario Act and local bylaw, the development of those and then the enforcement of them, really works more towards the bottom of the pyramid, changing the context so that individuals' default decisions are healthy. So if you think about our bylaw and what it's done, it's supporting non-smoking as the normal choice. And then if you actually look at smoking rates, they do still tend to be higher in poverty, those with mental health issues, and so focusing on changing some of those determinants that underlie those will further address those rates. We also did this with the changes that we made in the immunization program. And you remember I said that we had changed from the broad flu clinics, that really was a long-lasting intervention, but a more clinical intervention for us, to focusing on where we can make a difference and where we only provided services, which is in the school immunization program, and getting those out and preventing disease early on. So with that in mind, we've put together five areas of focus within the, still working within the current strategic plan. So those five areas are the Hamilton Healthy Kids Strategy, which includes the Community Challenge, the Food Strategy, Mental Well-being and Resiliency, Healthy Birth Weights, and Health System Integration. So the Hamilton Healthy Kids Strategy on the Community Challenge, this is focused in Ward 6, 7, and 8, and we're still awaiting the transfer payment agreement from the province. But nonetheless, we have a bunch of very engaged stakeholders, community members, who want to get working on this. And so they had their first community meeting in January, and they've actually agreed. This may sound simple, but they've agreed on something about how do we actually know whether or not there's a problem and how big that problem is. And measuring kids' height and weight in schools is something all of those groups have agreed upon, is something that's important to do for us going forward. So I can tell you, on a systems level, getting agreement on that has been a bugaboo in, whether it should be in the doc's office, just ask people, all sorts of things. And so there's agreement to do that going forward. But ultimately, we'll be working to look at implementation this year of the first of the themes that the province requires us to implement, and we're not sure yet exactly what that is going to be. And we do have a challenge here, because they do require us to fund a half FTE program manager as part of this on a permanent basis, and so we're looking at how we might be able to do that. The Food Strategy, you'll be hearing more about. Our community engagement, as I mentioned earlier, is planned for this year to inform the strategy, and the Food Summit was a foundational piece of work with that. In Mental Well-being and Resiliency, this coming year, we'll be working again with HealthLinks on that care planning for people who are at high risk, particularly of emergency department usage. And Susan Boyd, who's one of our managers, sits on the group that is doing that. We're also finishing off that survey on child and youth mental health promotion, which will inform changes in our own programming. We are hearing from school boards that mental health's a top issue, and as I said, in secondary schools, we're going to be working with them about what can we do around mental health at both the board level and the health action teams within the schools. And so that lit review is very timely in terms of informing that as well. We were also looking at a drug strategy and whether looking at those issues would be a part of this, and just speaking with the community, the community's interested in that going forward, and so there's elements as well that will relate there. But it's really neat with Mental Well-being and Resiliency. You notice I don't say mental health and addictions anymore. Now I've got Mental Well-being and Resiliency up here as our priority. There's a change in the language around mental health and mental illness. And we really used to mean mental health, meaning mental illness, and really recognizing that those are really two separate things. You can be mentally well and have a mental illness. You can have depression but be functioning well and feeling well. You can have schizophrenia and be functioning today well and feeling well. Or you can have no diagnosable mental illness and be feeling very mentally unwell, going through an acute loss or anything like that, which may be impacting your ability to have good mental health at a given day. And so looking at that positive framework around mental health and how does that inform all of our programming? You take the Bell ads that are out there, and the ones that were out in the last few weeks, where they've got the scene with the kids in the hall or the guys at work, and they do those three sorts of things of like, oh, there's Dick over there, he's got, I hear he's got this severe mental illness. And they say it three times, and they say, I hear he's really challenged, maybe I should give him a call. And changing that language, and we're seeing that societally, and we really want to make sure that we're changing our language here within the corporation, too, in terms of how we approach mental health and in viewing positive mental health as an important part of the strategy. So we'll be talking more as a whole corporation about those issues moving forward. The Healthy Birth Weight Strategy will continue. That's the group that I was telling you about, the 40 members, community agencies from across the community that are working with those new mums. They'll be moving forward with their care planning, and they're going to be looking to look at further strategies they can do to support healthy birth weights. Health System Integration's been a theme for us, and we've been trying to figure out how better to work with the system. And HealthLinks is part of the way of doing that, but their focus has been around care planning and those initiatives, and we think we need to work with them at a broader level so that when we're thinking about issues, we're thinking about them from end to end, from birth to death, and we're thinking with them around everything from promotion through till even end-of-life care, beyond treatment. So we've gone out and met, Jessica Hopkins and Brent Brad have gone out and met with the leaders of the hospitals, the family health teams, the Community Care Access Center, and said, look, what can we work on together? This is part of the reason with moving to McMaster as well, and looking at what can we do together to coordinate our programs and have a bigger impact and make sure we're all working in the same direction, and that we're using our expertise and lending our expertise where appropriate to initiatives that are going on there. So that's a focus for us going forwards as well. You notice we call these external and internal, and we very consciously want to make sure that we don't do too much navel gazing in these plans about what do we need to improve about ourselves. When we looked at plans across all of Ontario, that is something that organizations can get caught up in, is they talk a lot about their workforce and their financial situation and different things, and those are important. But we consciously make sure we're focused more on the external community, as you saw in those initial initiatives, but continue to have a focus on improving our workplace. And so these are the three internal priorities that we have for this year. So the first is our culture plan and working to make our organization, along with the rest of the city, part of a workplace of choice. And as I said, we're working with staff to identify one or two initiatives. There's, I think, a real energy around employee engagement as being a focus, and we'll be deciding soon on what the specific areas are that we're going to focus. Privacy records and information management system is a big area for us this coming year. So unrelated to the move last year, but shortly after we moved, we noticed we had some significant issues with some of our records handling. And as I said, our papers-based records handling is a challenge for us in a number of ways. One is that now with us working in the community more, we have to take records out more. Another is that the province has been implementing systems for us to use, but those systems don't allow us to upload some of the paper that we need to have, and so we have to have paper and electronic. And so there's all sorts of challenges that were identified and associated with it. And we did some, we made some changes ourselves, and then we asked an information and privacy expert to come in and review what we had and give us suggestions for how to move forward. We don't have that information management expertise in-house right now, and so we needed to ask somebody who had that. And we got a delightful lady who's worked within the Women's College Hospital and different places to come in and look at it, and she just did a fantastic job, as did all of our staff, in working with her and talking about what the challenges were, what we needed to do to improve. And so she just brought back to us at the beginning of January a number of recommendations, which our new privacy officer, Melissa, has taken and prioritized, and we're going to be, it's probably about a three-year plan to really move, and is dependent on some new electronic information systems. And in the capital budget, you approved the funding for Oscar to continue to be implemented throughout, which is going to be a foundation for this. But there's other things that we need to look at, and it's really going to improve our records management, and we're very happy about that. Program administrative support is our last of the three internal priorities in this area. And as you recall, I said that we were changing the way we do business, and I talked a lot about hoteling and having our staff out in the community. Well, at the same time, we now have almost all of our Well, at the same time, we now have almost all of our staff in one location. And it was an opportunity to really look at how are we supporting our programmes? Because we realised we had inequities. So during flu season and the flu immunisation programme, we've got a programme secretary who's run off her feet trying to support that programme, that for the rest of the year she can manage pretty much okay on her own. But in that piece, needs help. And you've got another secretary for whom the opposite is the case. And so we tended to have our administrative support aligned within the programmes, which is great from a costing standpoint and that kind of thing. But it didn't allow us to well manage across those different areas. And so we stepped back and said, you know, both from the standpoint of we realised there were some inequities. We also realised our administrative staff wasn't really feeling like they were treated maybe as well as they could, were recognised as the professionals that they are. And we realised that with moving, a lot of our business processes could and would change. And so again, we had hired somebody to come in and take a look, who's an expert in that, because we don't have that expertise in-house. And they made a number of recommendations. And so those are just being implemented now. You saw Board of Health reports on those last year, and we're just going forward with implementation at this point. And I'll talk a little bit more about the financial impacts of that soon. The Employee Recognition Pictures, I just wanted to flag at the bottom. We are the, our Public Health Services Technology Working Group, we're the very proud recipients of the team award from the city manager, from Chris, at the Employee Recognition Event that was just held recently, and that's them on the bottom left. And so that's the team that looked at how do we make these electronic technological changes to support the hoteling that was going to happen and the other changes that would be happening. And on the right is our nominee for the City Managers Award. Her name is Rueh, or Rudaba Alvi. She's an interesting lady. She's a women's health educator. And you know, we've talked about the Women's Health Educator Programme or the Community Health Educator Navigator role. And there's again, an enhancement that you'll see when that comes up. But this is one of those ladies who does this work. She's actually a physician from overseas, and she came to Canada, and she decided not to go on and redo her credentials here, and began to work within our programmes. And she's now been in Canada for 18 years, a number of those working with us within the Healthy Living Division. And she works to support new immigrants, to help them access health screening, so particularly around older women and cancer screening for cervical cancer, but other breast screening, other services that they need. And she actually, it's back to that determinance of health engagement approach. She's actually often ended up helping them become more confident, get jobs within the community, and become more independent as well. So those impacts, you know, that's where our primary introduction is, but we really help people in a much broader way beyond just getting them into screening. And so this role's been really important. And Rueh's just a lovely lady. She's just a wonderful woman. And she says this more than, she was a cardiologist in her former employment, who focused on echocardiography, like a very pinnacle of science sort of and medicine thing. And she says this fulfils her far more than that work did. She just truly loves it. So those are our priorities. That said, there are another suite of emerging issues and things that are sort of hot topics within public health. You'll see there are now eight things. I think when we started putting this together, which would have been in December of last year, there were probably less, but now, by now, there are eight new requirements within, areas of requirements within the Ontario Public Health Standards that are being worked on. One is the menu labelling promotion and enforcement, which, you know, don't, trust me, we're all, we're very much in favour of all of these, but they're challenging to make the turn on a dime sometimes when they come out quickly from the province. Smoke Free Ontario expanded enforcement this year is going to be a focus for us. Mental health promotion, so the ministry, I have to tell you, for years, mental health was a bad word within the hallowed halls of the ministry with public health. They really tried to figure out public health roles separate from mental health. And of course, in Hamilton, with the programming that we've had here, we've often seen public, mental health very much as a public health issue. And, you know, we've got services that support that. The ministry now sees mental health promotion as part of public health's role. And so they've announced that, but we're not clear yet what it really means for us. There's been two pivotal papers done by Public Health Ontario, the first focusing on adults, and the second one that we're working on around youth, around what is the role. And I'm sure that's going to inform what this means ultimately. They are going to do a broader review, they say, of the public health standards. They haven't defined it any further than that. They've also asked us to take on further public transparency in doing our investigations and inspections, and required us to post within 24 hours certain types of inspections we do on the website and whatnot. We've given them a plan to get there, but they haven't given us the rest of the standards yet around that. They're going to be revising our food safety standards. They're going to be revising programme indicators and broadening those. And they're going to be revising our safe water programme protocol. That's where the province is going. They also just are looking at not just a review of the public health standards, this comes up a little bit later, they're also going to be looking at a review of public health units and the lens. And I'm not clear if that's public health units and the lens, or public health units and the lens. And so there's not really been much more said about that. That's just, it's like an idea, a notion they need to do. And it came up, of course, in the review that was done in 2013. And so we're just waiting to hear more about that. Bedbugs and rat infestations are a significant issue for us. Bedbugs, you've already heard us talk about in the strategy coming back. But these issues, as I intimated when I was talking about the navigator role, they really require much more support in order to deal with effectively. So while the rates aren't really increasing at this point, it's just the amount of work that's required to address them, similarly with rat infestations. And we really do see an increase in rat infestations out there. But again, it's more the amount of work that we do and going out to communities and working with them. And so we're going to also be looking at this year in analysis to see if we can identify what might be causing those increases so that we can put in place some systematic solutions earlier rather than having to respond once the rats are out there. The Low Income Integrated Dental Programme, so this was the decision made by the province about a year ago, which was based out of a report done by the Chief MOH to take the SINOT Children in Need of Treatment Programme, the SINOT Expansion Programme, which went to 18-year-olds, the LW Programme, ODSP programmes, all those programmes, and put them into one Low Income Integrated Dental Programme with one set of standards, one delivery agent. And so that's happening, still kind of radio silence on what it means for us, with the exception that we just got some budget direction around that, which we'll actually be bringing back to the Board of Health at the end of this month. And, you know, that's going to be a big change for us, though. It will mean some implications for staff and all those sorts of things. It's still being worked out exactly what will we continue to provide, what will somebody else provide? And so we'll be getting there for August the 1st. And increased inspections for influenza vaccine providers. It's fantastic that the people are out there, the dentists, the pharmacists and the different locations want to provide it, but it means more for us in terms of inspection, and that's still growing. And we're, of course, focusing our immunisation resources around those vulnerable groups for cervical cancer, HPV immunisation and meningitis. Also is the Pan Am Games, as I mentioned earlier. The real impact at the time for us will be sort of twofold. From the health protection front, it'll be the inspections that are necessary for, you know, any vendors, festivals, those sorts of things. The actual premise itself, of course, is taken care of by the province. And it does tend to happen with events where you've got people coming from different countries that from time to time, there are outbreaks associated with events such as these. So we have to be prepared to respond to those. The other is the work we're doing from a Healthy Living perspective. It's a great opportunity to do health promotion around physical activity, and that's been included as part of our host community leadership. McMaster Health Campus, our phase two move will occur. So as I said, the Healthy Living folks will come down and be partly at McMaster and partly over at Robert Thompson, and some of our staff will move there. So we're looking forward to that move and to the opportunities that we have. We've been now meeting with McMaster to talk about more purposefully what might we do differently moving forward. And the Performance Measurement Programme, which I measured, mentioned earlier, is looking to have measurements across all of our 42 programme areas and have them in place and ready for the Business Planning Initiative in 2016. PAs will continue to be a focus as well, as the new Performance Accountability Development Tool gets ruled out for all staff in the department in a very systematic way. All right, over to the money side of business of the presentation. What's that? We'll skip that. You'll hear a little bit more in detail on those priorities at the Board of Health on February 19th, just getting into some of the specifics beyond what you heard there.
Dr Richardson? Could we have some, please, some questions?
Sure.
For the first part you had. So councillor Partridge.
Okay. Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor. Just one question in particular, of course, with the outbreak happening with measles. And that's, you know, I think a big concern for everyone. How are we addressing that? I may have missed it earlier in your presentation, so I apologise. There was an accident on Number 6 Highway, and all the power's out and water down, so it was a bit of a challenge getting here. But I just, you know, I'm concerned, and I've had residents asking me and, of course, giving me their opinion of the whole vaccination issue around measles. But what are we doing to address that?
Thank you very much, councillor, for the question. Mr Deputy Mayor, I too was behind that accident on Highway 6 this morning. So it was a budget day, not a day to be caught in traffic.
Exactly.
But the measles issue, so this is the fact that there's still measles cases that are occurring. And, you know, we've worked very hard to get our immunisation rates up, and that's the main way that we're going to address issues around measles. It's mass immunisations. And with measles, you have to have very high levels of immunisation to build up what's called herd immunity, so that it's hard for such an infectious disease to get from one person to another because most of the people around them are immunised. So we've had our own measles cases, as you know, in the previous years, which we've been involved in, and extensive numbers of contacts. And so we continue on an ongoing basis doing our immunisation promotion. We don't do any direct measles vaccine delivery, because that's done at a younger age group by physicians and families there. We will work to catch people up if they, they're welcome to come to our clinics. We do help as well for people who have somewhat confusing vaccine records, especially if they've come from other countries. Because our staff, over time, have gotten to know the immunisation programmes in many areas of the world, and so they can help to translate what it means for, you know, a Romani individual who's come over from a part of Europe or from somebody who's come from Africa, about what those programmes would have been. So we help in that way. We do distribute all of the measles vaccine. When it comes to promoting that vaccination programme, we're solidly behind it, you know, anytime it comes up to talk about it. Then when it comes to any sort of cases that are occurring, we do investigate any of the cases, look for contacts, look for the reasons why that might have happened, are there any systematic issues that we need to address? And we also do vaccine adverse, vaccine event reporting too, which is an important part of closing that loop. So we have the stats on what the adverse events are that might happen with a vaccine as opposed to just guessing whether something's associated with it. So when Toronto right now is going through its cases, we fortunately haven't had any cases where, you know, Niagara has now had one, and so they're also doing that, and we haven't had anything related to that. But we are having to be part of those teleconferences, participating in that sort of thing. So it wasn't up here because for us, it'll come up actually in the budget piece, just as where it hits our indicators. But it's not right now a major priority. It is part of our usual business.
Okay. And I appreciate that explanation. I guess my concern is that, you know, if it becomes an issue, a critical issue that we need to deal with, and you know how, better than we do, how quickly the issue can change. We went through it with SARS, albeit years ago. But, you know, that was like a bang right in the forehead when that happened. So I just was looking for some assurance that, you know, it is in the budget. I've heard you say that, that somewhat in the budget that you're going to go through next. The other thing, I just wanted to comment on the Chris Skinner inquest that was held. And thank you for mentioning that and recognising it. You know, as a result of that, it certainly had a huge impact on the Flambro community. Many, many people knew Christopher, including my own boys, and he was just a brilliant young man, and it was, you know, just a tragic, tragic set of circumstances. But as a result of that, we've had so many community partnerships come together to help the young people. And I thank you and your public health staff for being a part of that. We've got Healthy Community, Healthy Youth, which started five, six years ago, and is now a very strong organisation, working with parents, working with teens, it's well respected. And in fact, our newly elected trustee, Penny Deeth, is one of the principals of that organisation. So we have a new youth centre, which is private, which has opened up and again, doing tremendous outreach to youth of all ages and of all stations in life. Sorry, it's not just those who fall through the cracks, it's everybody, and it could be any one of our children. So, you know, it really is important for all parents to just be informed, get educated, and really understand what young people are dealing with. Because what we hear from young people, especially at Waterdown High School, when we did the survey, 82% of them said they did not have a mentor or an adult that was a positive influence in their daily life. And that's shocking. That is shocking. But it is a reality. And so, you know, I think if nothing else, we've been able to really address this. So I just wanted to thank you and thank your staff very much for that.
Thank you. And if I may, I would extend that as well, that the challenge for the youth, but it's a challenge for the parents. And the realities of the social pressure and the issues that they face day to day, I'm not talking just about Chris's parents, of course, for the, you know, the tragic loss that they suffered, but parents of teens. And how do you support good decision-making? And how do you be the person there in those kids' lives to help them through that? It's very, it's a difficult, it's a difficult time.
Thank you, councillor Partridge. Councillor Pearson, please.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Dr Richardson. I was, my questioning was on the same lines as councillor Partridge with regards to the measles outbreaks. And I understand, and watching as much as I can on, in the media, that citizens before the 70s were not immunised. And they're assuming, I take it, that they should be immune just because it was around at that time. Immunisation really didn't start until the 70s? Is that correct?
Through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, I'm actually one of the first group of kids that was immunised against measles. I was immunised with the experimental vaccine, which was not good, and had to be re-immunised. So it started back in the 60s, actually. 69, I think, was the year that I was immunised. And so the issue, remember I talked about how measles can spread really easily, and that's why you need that really high level of immunity? So the assumption is made, initially it was made that anybody born before 1956 was immune. But because of the degree to which measles is transmitted, and the fact that over time, really with the outbreaks that were still occurring, we were using up, if you think about the susceptibles, we were affecting all of those people who were susceptible. So you could really assume that anybody born before 1970, before the introduction of the full immunisation programme, was immune because of circulating virus, that virus was out there. But after 1970, once the immunisation programme started and you started to have herd immunity, you might still have these little pockets where people may not be immune to measles but may have been missed from a vaccine standpoint. So that's why they're saying anybody before 1970, we can assume they've had measles, we don't need to look at them, with a few exceptions, healthcare workers. We want to make sure that they're immune, not just guess, because they're the people who are going to be exposed and who in turn could expose somebody who's very vulnerable and that sort of thing.
Okay. And the second question, just for the viewing public also, I also, through the programming I'm watching, I can't remember, it was on TV, but anyways, it was saying that you can, there is a blood test that can be done to determine whether or not you are immune to measles, mumps and rubella? Is that correct?
That's right. So we, that, for anybody who's a woman who's been through childbirth, they know that they got tested for rubella during the course of their pregnancy to make sure that they were immune. So there's similar blood tests that can be done for measles to see if you're immune. Now, for most people, we don't recommend doing that serology. We just use it in healthcare workers really to make sure, because we want to be really sure. But for most, we recommend instead, if you don't, if you haven't got proof that you've had measles immunisation, but the two doses, to just go ahead and have a third.
Thank you. The second one is with regards to shingles. That's another one that seems to be on the rise. Do you have any comments with regards to that?
Jess, I'm going to turn to Jess to see if she wants to comment on the shingles piece.
Hi, thanks very much for the question. In terms of shingles, shingles is not a mandatory reportable disease. So for example, you'll be familiar with something like measles. That has to be reported to public health. So we have a reasonable understanding of the numbers that are associated with that. Shingles is not a reportable disease, therefore the numbers are not as well-known in Canada. However, that being said, with the introduction of the chicken pox immunisation programme, in order to develop shingles later in life, you order to develop shingles later in life, you have to have had chicken pox as a child because the disease lives in your nerve cells and then becomes active again later in life. And so we think that with the chicken pox vaccine, over time, we may actually see less shingles later on. And with the addition of the shingles vaccine, which is available for people starting around 50 to 60 years of age, most effective in the sixties, there should be over time less shingles. However, it's hard to be entirely certain because we don't have a reporting system that's associated with it.
Thank you very, very much. That clarifies and certainly puts us in a position where we really don't know numbers right now. My concern was the increase and are we tracking it, et cetera, and why this has happened. But we really can't base that on any numbers. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you councillor Pearson. Councillor Brenda Johnson?
Thank you. And thank you, Dr Richardson, for the presentation. I may have overlooked it or didn't hear properly. My understanding was last year that there was a decision made to stop all the flu clinics because they are available just about every time you turn around the corner. So have we seen any net savings from doing such, from storing the vaccine, the staffing that's involved, the rental of the space? Can you touch on that a little bit, please?
Sure, absolutely. Through you, Mr Deputy Mayor. The, so the flu program and the school immunization program were brought forward to the Board of Health in, I think it was August of last year, July may have been of last year, to talk about how could we make changes and shift where our resources were invested. And we were finding that we were going out and doing these flu clinics. And in the past, we used to immunize somewhere between 20 and 25,000 people as part of that program. And at that time, there wasn't vaccine even available in all the docs' office and never mind the pharmacies that have taken it on at this point. And so as the docs took it on and then the pharmacies, the level of immunization in the community, you know, it's gone up and the level of participation in the, in the public health clinics went down. And so we were still putting on these large scale clinics in order to be accessible. But we only get, those are our cost recovered funding for us, so we only get $5 per dose, which incidentally is less than we get for other vaccines. And part of the challenge around the financing of that program. And so here we are, we have to staff them, but we don't know who's going to show up. And then if people don't show up, here we are left with the costs and not enough revenue to really pay for the program. So hence, we said, let's downsize that program. We won't have the revenue, but nor will we have the costs. And the staffing that we were having to pay for, that we got, we're using our own resources for, will redirect back into the school immunization program to really target the vulnerable groups where we weren't getting high uptake rates of Hep B, meningococcal, and HPV vaccine. So that's been the shift that was made. So we did that for the first time this past flu season. And so we'll be looking at all those numbers once this is all over and where's it gone. So we'll come back at the beginning of, before next flu season to tell you how it went and what are we proposing for this coming year.
Okay. Thank you. And through you Deputy Mayor, I just wanted to reiterate, so you've reallocated the staff into other resources that you needed to use them for. So right now, we're not seeing any safe cost savings at this point in time, but that's what's going to happen when you come back next flu season to say, no?
No. Because it was a revenue model, the savings wouldn't, the decrease in costs that we experienced from not running the clinics just meant we didn't get revenue. And so we had staff invested in it. The problem was that it was costing us more to run than we were getting money for it. So we've decreased our costs, but we've also lost our revenue. And then we've taken those staff resources and redirected them to other work. So there won't be any further savings in what was proposed.
Okay. Thanks for the clarity.
Thank you councillor Johnson. And please continue, Dr Richardson.
Okay. So this is the, as I said, we're now into the money slides, into the budget slides. And this begins with our overview with our organizational chart. You can see overall, we have a total of 405.3 FTEs this year with an actual current head count of about 470 staff. We still have a number of positions that are part-time and a number of part-time staff. The complement is decreased by 0.6 FTE. And those of you who've seen our budget year over year, you'll see these small increases and decreases for us as we develop partnerships with other agencies in the community and they begin and stop and all of those sorts of things. So it's mainly within these 100% funded program areas or 100% partner funded areas that we have those changes. Our net to budget, you can see here that our 2015 budget by cost category, we're at a 2.6% increase. You'll see on a gross expenditure basis, we're at 1.5%. Our biggest driver here is our employee related costs, but even still, that's coming in at a pretty reasonable 1.5% here. And then the other major areas are the buildings and grounds and capital financing around our accommodations, which I'm going to go over further in an upcoming slide in more detail. We do have built into here, you remember every year I comment to you that we build in an assumption around what the province is going to give us in an increase in subsidy? Because they never communicate to us in advance. Part of that is because their budget year is different than ours, so they don't make those decisions till later in the year. But they don't tell us once they've made them as well. They no longer give us kind of a heads up or direction in terms of where they're going. So we've had a 2% increase for many years now, and so that's the assumption that we have built into this. We are hearing more strongly from them, that is a risk. We don't know what they're going to give us. And last year, we didn't get the funding letter until November, which is very challenging. We have heard more strongly from them that they may be holding this closer to zero. And so it is a risk in terms of going forward with this assumption. You know, at this point, we don't know. And so it's a matter of how do we balance those risks? And, you know, once we get a funding letter, we would have to come back and say, okay, this is what they ultimately decided on. So it is the assumptions that we've built into it at this point. Just in terms of how much money is that? That 2% subsidy assumption is a $469,000 revenue assumption. On gross expenditures, just show you this slide every year, you know, our employee related costs are our major, are where most of the money goes, 78.9%. Interestingly, over time, that's actually dropped from about 85% a few years back, just as other things have increased in cost. It is, our services are our people working with people, doing things. And so it's no surprise that employee related costs are almost the entirety of what our budgets are. This looks at our revenue sources for our budget. And you can see that about 75% of the money for our budget comes from grants and subsidies from other levels of government and amounting to about $38 million of the $51 million budget. And then about 21.6% or $11 million from the levy and then fees and reserves for others. Each year, we've been asked this, and so we did continue to include this in the information, just outlines here, what's the funding source for our overall programs? So you can see that our public health mandatory programs are about $34 million worth of our budget, of which 9,000, 9 million, I should say, comes from the levy. Our 100% funded programs from the province account for another 14 million. There are some levy costs due to cost allocations and some issues with funding caps, and we'll talk a little bit more about those in subsequent slides. Locally mandated programs, so these are things like the RCF program, the Community Health Bus, the Municipal Dental Treatment Program. Those account for about 1 point, just under $1.3 million worth of our budget. And then other smaller public health programs that are done with the ministry. You'll see here the sign out expansion piece. As I said, there are changes happening with the dental programs and you'll see more about that in the Board of Health report that's coming forward. Unfortunately, it won't be in your packages. It's going to be walked on because we got direction just late from the province and we want to get it to you while you're still thinking about budgets. But we couldn't get it right into the packages. We'll get it to you ASAP. Public health services overall, so it's our, this one shows our budget by division. And you can see here that there's that overall levy increase of 2.6% or 273,000 over 2014. And I'll go through the divisions shortly. So what are our major cost drivers? So our employee related increases continue to be the major driver in our budget, $700,000 worth of that. We do have that subsidy assumption of 469,000 that I talked about earlier. And we will look at these pieces around the rent facilities and clinic decreases that we've had, and then the debt charge of $533,000 associated with the McMaster site. And then the efficiencies that have been found within it and the program administrative review. So I'm going to be talking more about the accommodations and the admin review. They've got their own special slides to detail them in just a second.
Dr Richardson, could just, one minute, please. Councillor Collins?
Sorry, I don't know if this is included in the package. I didn't see it. But in terms of vacancies as part of your departmental budget, where do you sit now with that? And the second question would be, in past years, we were, sorry, departmental presentations emphasize the fact that we have an aging workforce and we're going to lose a number of our senior employees. And where do you sit with succession planning, expected retirements in 2015 and beyond? So two-part question. Through you, Mr Chairman.
So the vacancies, there is a slide on. If you're okay, I'll wait to answer that until we get to that slide. On the, it's an interesting question about us with our, with the aging workforce and succession planning. So you know succession planning is an initiative that's being taken across the corporation as a whole. And so we're looking at it and doing it systematically and working through leadership level positions and those sorts of things. We've long had issues and challenges with our specialized workforce depending on other demands that don't have to necessarily do with aging, particularly around specialized positions like public health inspectors, epidemiologists and those sorts of things. So we're always working with organizations to make ourselves attractive to them, to provide student placements, to do those sorts of things. Post, they're well prepared and supporting the education, but also we're an attractive employer. And they've been with us and they'd like to come back and work for us. And in fact, every one of the associate medical officers of health we've had since I joined the organization has been trained by McMaster and we've been involved in their training. So we've always had some hand in it. We're now part of that broader corporate approach of looking at deliberate succession planning and really training people for the positions in a management level. And in the past, you'll have heard me say before, that we rewarded people who did really well in their operational jobs by making them managers, but we didn't actually help get them there. You know, then we would try to work with them to understand the job. So we're working on that. We've done a lot of work in terms of a competency model for us, so we're clear about what the expectations are. We're actually, with our PAD rollout, we're actually deliberately setting those competency levels with all of the jobs so that we're clear and we're equitable across the organization going forward. We've done work on and off with Health Force Ontario around recruiting on a broader provincial basis, but haven't generally, I'm turning to Dorothy to see if she's feeling any differently around it this year, but more lately, haven't found that to be a good route to go in terms of attracting public health staff. Dorothy, I don't know if there's anything you'd add there?
Through you, Mr Deputy Mayor. I would just add that recruiting public health nurses, it doesn't seem to be facing the challenges as nursing is in other sectors. We have many applicants, many excellent applicants that we are able to hire still for public health nursing positions.
Yeah. So those, again, go through ebbs and flows within those.
Do you anticipate losing some of your most senior employees this year?
This year, we know at this point, not in this coming year. Of course, we never know when turnover is going to happen. As I look at the row and say, you know, is anybody changing their mind about sticking around for the rest of the year? But not in this particular year, but in subsequent years.
Thank you for that.
Thank you councillor Collins. Please continue, doctor.
So a little bit more about the low income dental integration plan. Again, this is the six oral health programs that are coming into one. There's going to be administration eligibility determination centralized and contracted out to a single provider. Preventive services only available to those who meet financial eligibility rather than need. I think we'll explain more of this at the Board of Health meeting and not go further here. The program administrative support review. So we had, as I said, we had program administrative support people throughout all of the different divisions. And this kind of looks like measles that councillor Partridge was raising earlier and we affectionately refer to it as that. But what we did was we brought all of those administrative staff together into one division within planning and business improvement. And now they're going to support all of those different areas. And so it's just an overview slide to show you what's going on. Sort of talks a little bit about what the benefits were of that. So there's been a number of things that were going on. So if you go back to that report that we presented last year, we talked about how, the consultant talked about how our jobs were very big. They were too diverse and for program admin support. So they had to do a variety of different things. And they wouldn't necessarily see that thing, they might see it in July and see it again in December, and oh my gosh, how do you do that? I don't remember. And this was kind of happening all over throughout the admin group. And so one of their recommendations was to make more discreet focused jobs so that people really could understand what they're supposed to do, do it over and over and develop expertise and improve job satisfaction. And so that's one thing that we're focusing on doing. Better client services. We have a lot of turnover in our admin staff because of those challenges around job satisfaction and whatnot. And so when it comes to our clients, what we're hoping this will do is reduce that turnover. And then people will have the information they need to have, they'll be better, remember I talked about that unevenness in terms of, say, flu season? And so they'll have more resources able to flow to a given issue and to be planned so that they're responding to them. So you're not having people who are waiting on phone calls forever because that poor secretary's run off her feet. And we'll have a receptionist in place, as I said. You're not confronted by the locked door. I hate that when I go anywhere, that locked door and the list. And they'll actually have somebody there who can support them. Better work environment, they'll now have a team of people who do the kind of work they do. Right now, they have teams that are very supportive, but they can't turn to the public health nurse to ask them how to do their work. They can now, they'll now have a dedicated supervisor who's allocating the work, who's thinking about policies and procedures when they come in or need to be developed and what does it mean for us and how do we do that work? And how does it need to be organized? They'll be able to talk to peers about it, go to their supervisor who's an expert in that kind of work and work it through. And finally, we have been able to save money by going this route as well. So overall, with the accommodations impact in the Board of Health report 11026, back, it's been three years, four years going on now since we talked about these things, we committed to finding $476,000 and $476,450. And we've been able to do that. So it's a real proud moment for us. It's been a struggle. We did make the commitment and we've looked at many different ways that we could get there. But we did accomplish $77,000 worth of efficiencies in 2014. We did make a change with one of the program secretary positions, which is very much in line with what happened with the admin review in 2014 and saved $32,000 there. Further efficiencies in 2015 of 124,000. We now are not paying for clinic rent, a sum of $110,000 for that clinic's rent. We no longer need a facilities project manager because we're not trying to fix things all the time as we were in all our different sites and with some of the really aging facilities and issues that we had. And so we're now, if we have to do major facilities issues going forward, we'll have to pay on a project basis, just as anybody else would, but we don't need to have a halftime project manager. And finally, the actual administrative review, we were able to find about $85,000 in savings there. So we've managed to find and have offset those costs. FTE complement by funding source, so we talked about budget by program and funding source, but this is also, we often get asked, okay, that's great about the programs, but what about the people? Because you know that there are implications around people, depending, you know, if a program was to shut down, what might happen and that sort of thing. So overall, about 284 of our FTE are funded by cost shared provincial programs, about 112 from 100% funded programs by the province. 100% levy pays for 6.7 FTEs, reserves right now for 1.5. Those are both time limited positions. And user fees pays for one person within the RCF program. One FTE, I should say. Vacancies councillor Collins, this was the question that you had raised. So right as of December 31st, we had 6.8 FTEs vacant. You can see they're sort of just distributed throughout the units. Except for a half FTE of these, all of those positions have either been filled or in the process of being recruited. The half FTE that's not filled right now, we're just holding, if you, remember I've been talking about the child and youth mental health promotion work we're doing to look at where should we be focusing? Ellen's chosen to hold a half FTE there, pending that review and where we're going before deciding whether there's some tweaks we should make around exactly who we should be hiring into that role. So we're just holding on that for the moment. So budget by division. So this is the budget for the OMOH area. You'll see here that the employee related costs show a decrease here of $68,000. But there's actually a 1.7% increase for merit and contractual still behind that number, but the overall impact is 0.6%. but the overall impact is a 0.6 decrease. It's part of the efficiencies that I explained earlier. Here you'll see as well the rent savings that are in the building and ground line, and then the capital financing impact of the, of the McMaster site.
Dr. Richardson, Counselor Collins, please.
Yep.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Just looking at the, Dr. Richardson, the consulting and contractual. In 14, it didn't look like there was much budgeted, but in terms of what was used during the year, there was well over 200,000 for the, almost 200 for the contractual and a small amount for consulting. What budget pressure would we have that would account for that?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I'm going to look to Helen to help me on this one because I didn't go over in detail my own slides. But part of it was around the information and privacy work that we did, was to bring in somebody to do that work for us. The other would have hit the prior year. Helen, what's the other piece?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. It was the epinephrine autoreptile pilot.
The pilot, the $82,000 towards that pilot. Came through there.
Thank you for that. The capital financing, again, sorry, can you over that one? Does that one eventually come out once?
No. So the capital financing, so back in 2011, when the McMaster site was approved, there was a contribution that was made to McMaster, and then there was, there was a decision around how we would finance our own sites. And I'd have to turn to Mike in finance for the details on how it works, but the long and short from a more layman's perspective is that this is, in essence, our cost for that premise. We decided to do it in this way, so it's a capital cost that is paid. We got lower rates going through Infrastructure Ontario, and it will be there, I think it is for 30 years. Is that right, Mike?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. It is a cost to borrow related to the city's contribution to the project. And Dr. Richardson is correct, as we matched the term with the life of the asset. I believe it is a 30-year debenture. And so at the end of 30 years, the capital financing would fall off, and I believe the original report in 2011 spoke to a potential long-term, potential savings once that capital financing thing falls off at the end of the 30-year term.
Traditionally, wouldn't those be included in the corporate financials or is this how we would treat other accommodation pressures in other departments?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. As Dr. Richardson spoke to in one of her previous slides, the 2011 report, there was a commitment from public health to offset those capital financing costs in part through some efficiencies. And that is why we have reported both the capital financing within public health's budget as well. They've captured and reported with respect to their efforts to offset that pressure through their operating budget.
Then the natural question would be, was it offset completely? So even though there's a budget line here, that's, there's a pressure, did we find savings in other areas of the department to offset the?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The commitment was, as referenced in the slide before you, was $476,450. That was the commitment. And as identified, there are a number of lines there in terms of efficiencies and savings to, to match that commitment in terms of savings.
So the 476, is that represented in the 533? That's listed as a budget pressure for 215?
So the, the 476 is distributed, as you can see, they're in different places. We've been working to save that money because this is, this doesn't all happen in one year for us, right? So we've had pressures that have rolled through, ups and downs, you know, pressures and savings that have happened in given years. So we've been matching that as we roll through. So the increases last year were about $120,000. And so we had $120,000 of savings to offset those, so that's why we made those changes in 2014. And then as the remaining ones have rolled in, we've looked at not only the changes in rent costs, as you see the big $110,000 savings there, but other further efficiencies and related projects we were putting in place, like the changes with the admin review and the changes in the way we do business to, to match it. And so they don't all fall within my budget area. They, the rent falls and the, and the facilities costs fall there, but these are distributed throughout the budget.
So to be clear, the, the 476 is part of the 533 or not? That's a different number?
They're different numbers, is how I would explain it. But I turn to Mike always to see if there's a better financial way to put it.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The business case required a savings or efficiency in part to offset the capital financing of 476. So the 476 represents staff's commitment to offset some of the costs with respect to the project, and those costs in part would be reflected in the capital financing number.
So working through the performance metrics and service levels, and I won't go into these in detail because there's a number of them, and there's a number for a couple of reasons. One is that we have the accountability agreement indicators, which you see at various points throughout the years, we have to report on them. But we've also begun to improve those other, or include the other performance metrics that I mentioned that we've been working on, so you can look at our programs, look at how well we're doing, and, and understand where we're at. So these, by and large, are the, the accountability agreement indicators, and you'll see that we've labeled those at the top of the slide. These are the ones that are included in part of that with the province. And you can see that we're close to meeting our targets or meeting our targets in most areas. Still issues with the HPV vaccine wastage and influenza vaccine wastage, but much better than in previous years. And inspecting refrigerators, we're pretty close to that 100% mark. We often argue with the province that, you know, you miss one fridge because you couldn't get into somebody's office and then you couldn't get back. And, you know, that's why you end up with a number like 99.3%. But very close to the target that's there. More, Clinic Home Preventive Services has some, probably the most of the actually operating targets right, right now. So these ones around school-aged children who've completed immunization for Hep B, HPV and meningococcus, there's actually no ministry target because they realize their immunization system was not good enough to actually capture the data they needed to set the targets. And so now with Panorama having been rolled out, they'll now, once that data is all flowing through that, they'll be able to use that, they believe, to set, work with us and set good targets for these. We still measure what our actual coverage is because we can do that locally, we don't have the, we have better access to the data. And so we're currently at about 80% of our school-aged kids having completed immunizations for Hep B. As I said, we would want that to be higher than 80%, so that's part of the reason why we're going to focus here. You can see the HPV rate at 59%. Again, we would want that to be much higher than, than that level. And then 84.7% for meningococcus, and although that looks decent, we would want it to be higher. We would want it to be in the 90s. And then the percent of all JKS K grade-two students who get oral health screenings at 100%. Now, that's a part of the program, by the way, for dental that will stay going forward. Service highlights, so these are other, either indicators that we're required to report to other programs, but they're not actually in our accountability agreements with the Ministry of Health, Public Health Division, or ones that we've put in place for our own programming. So you can see our mental health promotion program, we're coming in a little under our target. This is partly because of some of the changes that we had within the, within the year, but still, this is a group that we're always working with to look at how can we reach as many as possible. Our OSIS group, we did over our target at 1,500. Our number of individual contacts received a case management service related to substance abuse, so this is our ADGS program, alcohol, drugs, and gambling services, just coming in under their target, similarly with the gambling piece. Our number of clients serve through the dental clinic and bus, this is just under our target of 5,000 because of the closure of the clinic on the mountain and the reopening of the clinic downtown. So this coming year, we would expect to see the 5,000. It's not like the needs going down in that area, as we've talked about in previous reports. The need continues to be there for those services. The number of client contacts made through the needle-syringe program and the harm reduction supplies continues to increase, and there's, continues to be pretty much a provincial trend around this with increasing number of clients, increasing number of needles exchanged, and, and that continues here. From an organizational chart perspective, their 2015 complement has decreased by 0.8 FTEs, but has no levy impact because these are 100% funded programs where we've had to make reductions, and you've seen those reports in year in order to stay within the, their funding caps. This slide gives the net operating budget by section. Generally, the increases in the sections are related to, again, employee-related costs, but the sexual health and harm reduction section does show the rent savings. So as Counselor Collins was asking earlier, you know, are they all reflected there? You can see here the rent savings because that piece of the rent was budgeted within that program. The gross net divisional budget according to cost category, again, comes in at 0.1%. Going on to family health. So again, lots of performance and service metric levels. They only have one accountability agreement indicator, and that's the Baby Friendly Initiative. In 2013, we were at intermediate status, and 2014, we're on track for designation. The goal had been to be designated this past year, which we didn't meet, but ultimately, the, the organization that does the accreditation for these has had this huge surge because all the public health units had to be accredited, and they haven't been able to get us all through and do the reviews to make sure that, that we deserve accreditation. And so we're hoping they're going to have that done soon in this year, and it seems to be on track. From a service standpoint, you can see we continue to manage somewhere around 6,300, 6,500 health connections calls. Healthy Babies, Healthy Children program does about 8,000 home visits. Now, that's combined between public health nurses and family home visitors. So about 4,300 of those visits are made by family home visitors and about 3,700 by public health nurses. Our Nurse-Family Partnership program, which is the only one, of course, in Ontario, the other program running in Canada is in BC and in research mode, and so we won't know yet for a little while what they find, but we're continuing to see about 1,900 people through that program. And the car seat installation education program works with families, about 300 families a year to look at car seats and how to install them properly. And they've been worked, what they did in 2014 is they worked with EMS to bring the cargo seat clinics indoors at the EMS sites when their ambulances weren't there, and so they could have them and, without worrying about weather, because otherwise they could be canceled due to rain and that sort of thing, because they're just doing them in parking lots at malls and that sort of thing. So that's been, been good. And they're going to do more evening and weekend in response to client feedback that they're, they've gotten. The breastfeeding clinic, we're down this year with our number of visits there. This site has had some challenges in finding a permanent home. It's had a number of moves in the last few years, from Lime Ridge to Banquet area to, or sorry, a school to now it's going to move downtown to McMaster Family Practice and be part of that clinic. And so we will have a permanent home and not so dependent on the goodwill of others to house us for periods of time, which then interrupts, of course, our ability to serve clients. Welcome Baby, the Canadian prenatal nutrition program, 5,500 visits this year. Check It Out is a neat program where parents can drop in and assess their child's growth and development, and it's worked through Best Start and the, and Asky as the lead. So they, they book these clinics and book us in. We were historically finding that we weren't maximizing their use, so they're looking at new ways to organize that program with Asky and the, and Best Start program. Prenatal group education, we do both face-to-face education and online education. It's up to the client, whichever environment they feel they would learn best in. For this year, about 164 people chose online as opposed to face-to-face. We do have both special sessions in place for young families, young parents, and had about 100 this past year in that. Quit Smoking Services around pregnant and breastfeeding parents, we had 51 individuals involved, which is up from the year before, which is good news. And again, our Child and Adolescent Services services about 784 new clients in the past year. Family health org chart, you can see there's no complement change for family health. Generally, again, in looking at the net operating budget by section, the increases are related to employee-related costs and, and the contractual increases with the collective bargaining. You do see here, though, a larger increase in our Healthy Babies, Healthy Children program. This is one of those programs, and we made the commitment for any 100% funded program where we were seeing pressures, we would leave them in as if we were operating at current service level. We mitigate whatever we could, but where we couldn't mitigate anything further, then we would leave them in. And so this is an example of where we're doing that. And so they're going over their cap. In the past, their staffing levels between turnover and moving to a younger demographic coming into that program, we've been able to work within the gaffing in the program, but there's been more stability now within the program, and so people are becoming more advanced in terms of working through the steps, and so we're having more pressures in that program. So we've left this one in, is, is up to council whether they would choose to do, approach this differently. If we were to reduce the budget within this area, we would recommend two things. One is that we would need to look at service levels ultimately and what that would mean, but we wouldn't actually recommend decreasing the FTE right now because of the, we think we could, we could manage that through attrition going forward with the turnover that still does occur within the program. So if you've got any questions about that, Dorothy's probably better able to explain it with the details.
Counselor Collins?
All right, Dr. Richardson, unclear in terms of what the discretion is, the dollar amount associated with it.
Dorothy, would you mind going over it?
I'm through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. It's about $92,000 that would be the pressure that would be outside of usual increases that would be required in this case.
And it's included in the submission right now? It is? Okay. Thank you.
Looking at the family health budget by cost category, again, as I mentioned earlier, the major issue is employee-related costs for them that's driving that budget increase. Health protection. So they begin with a number of accountability agreement, performance indicators again, and you can see that we did manage to negotiate with the province not to have 100%, but close to 100% is the target for these, and we've met those targets, with 98.8% of high-risk food premises inspected once every four months, and 95.1% of moderate-risk food premises inspected. Class A pools, we're able to hit the 100% mark, and high-risk drinking water system inspections, we again count what we do, but they're still waiting to look at, at issues with their system to set their own targets. But we know we're getting there, out to those, those places. Was there a question on this?
Counselor Johnson, you want to ask now? Please.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm not cleared, Dr. Elizabeth, whether or not this falls under this slide, but, and you and I've had this conversation before. We have a variety of farmers' markets that are, are up and coming, and they have been very, very successful, very, very popular. We have vendors within those farmers' markets. And a month later, we'll have a Bimberk Fair, same vendor, same stall, same everything, and now we're running into problems. What, and, and this is putting this out there again, before the fall comes around and we end up with the same situation we did at the last 11th hour in September of last year. I would really like to put it out there that we need to work on this. I understand that the Bimberk Fair is considered an event, and the farmers' market is considered, whatever, but it's the same vendor, the same stall, the same location, but because it falls under a different heading in somebody's binder, now we're running into major problems and major expense for that vendor that didn't have the expense when he was selling it on a weekly basis in the same spa, in the same spice. I keep saying this over and over again. So when I look at the food risk and the food premises, I get that, and I, and I believe they followed everything, but because the event changed, the rules changed, and I just can't get my head around that, and neither can anyone else out there as far as I know.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. It is about the, the provincial regulations and how they address each, but I'll turn to Rob because he knows the background on it.
Not by his face there.
No, he didn't look, he didn't look. I know he does, though.
Mr. Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I mean, sometimes we're confused too, because the reality is, the regulation is written one way, but where there's an absence of regulation, then the guidelines are written a different way. And, and that's where we get this problem in trying to be masters of our local municipality versus having to follow the masters of the province. It would be nice if there was one consistent overarching food regulation that would be able to capture this, but there isn't. What I'm suggesting is that we will work with the market vendors, that, that's the problem we have right now, is that the farmers' market has a different designation than markets that are not, that are deemed farmers' markets. And we use that term loosely. that are not, that are deemed farmer's markets, and we use that term loosely. Farmer's markets have to be defined as meeting a certain number of actual farmers working in that market versus the farmer's market downtown, which isn't a farmer's market under our reg, under our regulation. Special events are a whole other category that aren't regulated, and so we're going to work with, you know, the operators of these events to try and ensure. But when people start producing foods in their homes to sell at special events, we have to then put some way of regulating them so that we make sure that they're not producing a food that's going to hurt somebody in the public.
I think it's been switched around though, Mr. Hall, just with all due respect. The farmer's markets had the regulate, and now it doesn't have it, and that's fine. When this vendor now sells the same product, the same stall, the same location, same everything, but because it's now the fair, the regulations started to pound in. So that's where they had the issue, was at the fair, not for the 14 weeks prior to that when they were selling it on the open market at the farmer's market. It's now it's under the fair, and it becomes an issue. So I think that's where we need to have that conversation because it's literally sending a lot of the vendors through, going crazy, because they're saying, I follow under this and I'm doing fine, but now it's a whole new set of rules over here, and it's the same location, same product, same everything. So I think we need to get that sorted out before fair season comes around and Peach Festival comes around, especially when it is, again, an established vendor who's been doing this for weeks, years and years, and now it's an issue because some new rule came in around fairs. So that's where my issue is.
We'll definitely work on each individual fair and work with the organizers to make sure that we can try and be as consistent across the various fairs in the city.
And I think that's the key, Rob, is consistency. I think that's where the confusion and a bit, a lot of the frustration comes from, is there is no consistency, and there should be. So it's like one of the vendors said, so I can literally have, you know, I could make an entire community sick for 14 weeks, but I can't on every fair week. It's not that I ever would or never would, never will, but it really is frustrating, especially when it comes down to the 11th hour, when the inspector comes in just before the fair opens. So I just want to put it out there.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. We would hope nobody would try to make anybody sick for 14 weeks, but.
No, but that's how silly it's starting to look.
There is some principles that we try, through you, council, there is some principles that we try to adhere to, and even though you don't have to comply with the food premise regulations, we still do inspections to ensure that there's no health hazards present.
No, and I said that all in jest, but the bottom line is, we have different rules for the same location, same vendor, just a different heading on what's happening that weekend, and that's the confusion and frustration that I'm getting. Thank you.
And through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I mean, that's the challenge for us too, right? We have to uphold this set of rules in this place, and we can do this set of rules in a different circumstance. And so we're often as frustrated as the vendors are about those, you know, why isn't there consistency between it? And that's why, as Rob says, they inspect from the standpoint of health hazards to try and maintain like an equitable level of requirement, but there are things that we can't move away from. And so we're caught in many of these circumstances because we have to uphold the regs, and how do we do it? But we'll work with you to see what we can do, but in some places, unless we get the province to change some regs, we might be in a place where we can, we would have to break rules that we can't break.
But to be fair, the farmer's market is to highlight and showcase farmers and their produce. This is what this vendor's doing, and the vendor, and the same conversely, Benbrook Fairs are to highlight and showcase farmers and their produce. So they're, in my opinion, the thread is the same, it's just a different heading over the, over the top, and I think there's some, there's got to be some common sense in this. Putting it out there, oh, good, thank you.
Yeah, great. Okay, so we'll go to percent of public spas inspected, so again, they're, they're working on setting targets around this one. The province hasn't gotten to this one yet. Our actuals are 100% those, so can't really do any better than that. Percent of personal service settings inspected, we're just under the 100% mark, above our targets. Percent of suspected rabies exposures reported with investigations, they're still working on setting targets around this one and have 100% of our rabies exposures being investigated. That's, just so you know, that's about 1,440 contacts that we make each year around that issue. And percent of confirmed invasive Group A strep disease cases where initiation of follow-up occurs in the same day, we're at 100%, so we're meeting all of those targets. Community and institutional outbreak investigations, so these are the things we track as well in terms of understanding what we're doing in a given year. There are about 123 outbreaks last year. Health hazard pest control complaint investigations, about 1,300, which is similar to the previous year, and TBID investigations, 2,000, up about 150. Those numbers fluctuate across a number of diseases. But there are a number of emerging trends that, just to flag here, we talked about measles earlier, which is an old disease, which is, you know, comes and goes still in terms of its impact on our work and our impact on our community, more importantly, but there are a number of other ones in this past year. MERS-CoV, which is that virus that's been largely in the Middle East, has been an issue this past year. Ebola, of course, was a significant issue this past summer and past year. Enterovirus D68 as well, that was the enterovirus where they saw an increased number of deaths in kiddies, particularly kiddies with asthma in the U.S. and in some settings as well. And while these aren't strictly speaking, some of them are reportable, but they're not actually happening here, we're not having diseases, but the impacts in terms of investigating people who show up from the countries where those things are happening, or having to get our, work with our health sector partners, hospitals, ambulance, everybody to have them prepared and ready to respond in any cases, that takes one heck of a lot of work. So there's no actual disease occurring, but there's a lot of work in order to be prepared, work together, and just look at the people who are coming in and who are being investigated. Vector-borne disease investigations, you know, we started many years ago in talking about West Nile virus when this came in, and it, you know, has declined to some extent in terms of the incidence here, but we are, as predicted with changes in weather, climate change, that sort of thing, we are seeing more of things like Eastern Equine encephalitis, Chikungunya virus, and ticks for Lyme disease are becoming more of an issue. They are spreading into the northern U.S. and into the southern parts of Ontario. Health Protections Org chart, there's no complement changes for health protection from 2014 to 2015. The major drivers within each section here are employee-related increases. The Residential Care Facilities Program continues to have a good insurance history, and so our insurance costs in this program have been going down and still go down, and you see that within the RCF program and some savings in the vector-borne disease program because we've brought our larvicide in contract in at a lower rate than we anticipated. Overall, they have a modest half percent increase in health protection with employee-related costs still being the major driver. And again, you can see here in the reserves recoveries cost category, the $21,000 reduction, which is that insurance premium reduction for RCFs. Moving on to healthy living, so they have a number of accountability agreement and performance indicators as well. Percent of youth 12 to 18 who have never smoked a whole cigarette, our actual target, our actual rate is 94.7%, which is great, but as I said, the youth in the college and university years are tending to make up for it and having significant challenges in tobacco control with that age group that we're working on. Percent of tobacco vendors in compliance with youth access legislation, so this is the fact that they can't serve or provide cigarettes to minors. We're now at 95%. Percent of secondary schools inspected once per year, we do all of those. Tobacco retailers inspected, we do all of those, and both with the different sections of the Act. One last accountability agreement indicator is the number of fall-related emergency visits in adults aged 65 plus, and as you know, most of the accountability agreement indicators, we have more direct control over, this is one we don't, we just have some influence over, and the goal is to maintain or improve the current rate, and our actual right now is at 5,409. It's interesting to note, the home stair falls account for 25% of falls in seniors, and we've been, actually, one of our PHNs has been at a national conference just this past fall on the National Building Code and advocating to improve stair design within the code to reduce the falls in this group. So that's how far abroad our work goes. She's, the staff also work with physicians to develop protocols around assessment tools to identify people who are at risk, and so we've done a lot of work with them. In the service highlights, you see the Hamilton Helmet Initiative, and we were able to work with a number of elementary schools still this year to provide helmets to kiddies who needed them, and as well, free helmets to other residents who are in need, and this number went up because of a partnership through the Best Start Network, we were able to get more out there. One of the other things that's been really good is the work we've done with area physicians on an algorithm for concussion management, and so that's been an important part of changing the way we manage concussions and the actual brain injury that they are. Some other service highlights, we had 2,300 YouTube hits on the Skinner underage drinking video. The cancer prevention for hard-to-reach clients, this is a new piece for us. We were able to reach 11,292 individuals, not a new program, but new measurement. Registered tanning salons, so this was something that came in last year, was our inspection of tanning salons with the new legislation, and so we got to 100% of those 41 salons that have tanning booths. Tobacco workplace cessation projects, so we expanded our cessation into a number of workplaces and reached 8,800 employees. Our number of enforcement checks to meet our requirements under the bylaw and SFO, 1,800. Our youth engagement, this really began with tobacco, with a lot of work that we do with the, with youth there, and has expanded into other areas, and we now are reaching 36,000, almost 37,000 youth through 79 schools with health action teams and whatnot, just some really fantastic work that is going on, youth-led, youth-driven. Food strategy, our food charter was endorsed in 2014, developed our community engagement plan, which has been underway with the food summit, and had that, over 100 participants at the food forum. The org chart, the complement has a net increase of 0.3 FTE. This is a second position which has no impact on the levy. Net operating budget, employee-related costs again are the major driver, as you can see. Or as you can see with this one, 2.6%, and that in part as well, of course, accounts for that new seconded FTE that is working and is offset by amounts in fees and general PBI, so I talked earlier about the Canada Learning Bond Program, so the Canada Learning Bond RESPs that are established for low-income families, there were 207 kids who had those established through the work of our public health nurse. Performance measurement and continuous quality improvement, so this is setting up those performance systems. There's six programs that now have it fully operational out of 42. Pilot testing the indicators in eight, they're working on the indicators in 17, and will get started in 10, and then the plan is to have them all up and ready by the end of 2016 so we can report with the 2017 business plans. Our four evaluations that we targeted, we completed four, one in progress, and moved 400 staff, and still managed to have 56 students come through. The org chart for PBI, we have a total of a 0.1 FTE decrease in PBI, which is related to the administrative review. Budget-wise, net operating budget by section, mostly, again, the pressures are employee-related increases, but the administration section shows the savings we achieved to support the admin review changes that I mentioned earlier. So again, you're seeing how that's distributed. And there, by cost category, you can again see in different areas, the employee-related remains the major driver, but you see the efficiencies in the agencies and support payments line, which is one of the changes we made to the rapid risk factor surveillance program. We no longer participate in it. That was one of the efficiencies we put in place to offset costs there. And that's the last slide.
Just a moment, I don't have any committee members on here for questions. I'd just like to say thank you, Dr. Richardson, for the detailed report, and councillor Ferguson.
I apologize, I'm a little late, I had to, the Ontario Police Chiefs Association is in Hamilton, so I had to do the kickoff of that first thing this morning, and I wanted to hear Glenn's presentation, but through you. I've noticed, Elizabeth, that Ebola is not getting the attention it used to. Is that no longer a threat?
That's, yeah, not getting the attention it used to. So there's always a tension when diseases don't get the attention they deserve, because there's no doubt that Ebola is a deadly disease. It's, you know, continuing to be an issue in Africa, and will probably come and go for, you know, until the virus at some stage millennia from now evolves in some other way. But, so it's not getting the attention right now, I think, because we haven't seen the transmission to North America, that we did see one or two cases of, you know, last summer, last fall. So there was a lot of work done to prepare for the potentiality of that happening across the country, and unfortunately, you know, in a few cases that did happen. And we've done a lot of that work here in Hamilton and working with the health sector and with the directives from the province to, in order to make sure that we're prepared. We did have, you know, people under investigation during that time period, but as we've come to understand things better, be better prepared for it, and then the outbreak is waning, then we're not seeing as much of an issue as we did at that time. Will that continue to be the case in a country where, you know, the driving issues behind Ebola or the, you know, the poor healthcare infrastructure, you know, lots of other challenges there, you know, it could continue to be an issue and we'll, we'll have to stay on the ready for it.
But two questions. Is it shrinking in Africa, the number of people getting contaminated with it? Secondly, are we ready, should it come here?
So in terms of, is it shrinking, my read of this data, I'm just turning to Jessica, she would be the most up to date on it, they've delisted more countries from that alert list, and it's continuing, we haven't seen any further growth, but do you want to make any further comments, Jess?
Yes, thank you, through the chair. In Africa, there are fewer new cases being reported, so hopefully, if everything stays on this course over time, we will see a gradual decrease in the total number of cases. In terms of our preparedness, this is something that we've been preparing for since we found out about the outbreak that was happening in Africa. We do have policies and procedures in place in order to manage any persons who are returning from those countries who don't have symptoms so that they can be monitored in case they develop symptoms, as well as across the healthcare sector and working with all of our partners in hospitals and primary care, there are clear policies and procedures in place about what would happen if there was the very unlikely event that someone with Ebola came to Hamilton.
Okay, because this was, at one point, the new SARS, wasn't it? It was a dangerous infection that could migrate to North America, and so it appears to be arrested then, and, you know, I actually heard somebody compare it to, there'd been more people married to Kim Kardashian, more Americans married to Kim Kardashian than have contacted Ebola, so it seems to have fallen back, and I just want a confirmation from you on that.
Thank you, councillor Ferguson. I have no further speakers here. Dr. Richardson, thank you for your presentation today, very detailed and precise, thank you for that. Motion to receive, Mayor Eisenberger and councillor Pearson, all in favor? Thank you. So we have, going to go to 7.2, and we need some staff here. Do you, they're here. Do we want to have a break at this point in time? Do you want to keep ordering along, committee members? Councillor Green?
Mr. Chair, just a notice that I do have to step out at around 12, 12:30, just to let the councillors know, I have to step out for a little bit about 12:30.
Step out, okay. Well, staff are here, I guess councillors, we can keep going?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so make sure, try to keep quorum in here, we're losing quorum on and off, okay? So we'll try to work through it. So we'll try to work through it. Okay, we're on to 7.2. Planning Economic Development Department, Jason Thorne, begin the presentation for planning and economic development. Good morning, Mr. Thorne.
Good morning. You all set? Good morning, members of council and Mr. Deputy Mayor. So I'm going to take us through the budget presentation for PED. The, our maintenance budget doesn't reflect any additional FTE pressures based on the restated 2014 budget. We did have three in-year FTEs added in the building division in 2014. Those were done out of the building permit reserve fund pursuant to the council direction to be able to add in-year FTEs as required if they don't have a levy impact. So other than those three in-year FTEs, we haven't budgeted for any increase in 2015. I'm going to start with some of the highlights from 2014. I'll begin with this slide, which I think really is one of the signature accomplishments for the department and for the city, and it's something that's been reported on to council a few times in the past. That 2014 represented the fourth time in the past five years that we exceeded $1 billion in building permit construction value. Just looking at the trends over the last term of council, we averaged about $1 billion per year and about 6,000 building permits. If you compare that to the term of council prior to that, our average was in the range of 750,000 with about 4,000 average annual building permits. What's important about this, I think, in terms of our presentation today, is it reflects activity across the department. It reflects the work that economic development and tourism and culture have done to bring these opportunities to the city and to make sure the city is attractive to investors and to people who want to move here. Our planning and growth management teams who get the development approved and serviced, and then the indicator itself represents the actual issuance of the building permits. It's also indicative, I think, of some of the workload pressures that are being faced in the department, and I'll come back to that a little bit later in the presentation. One of the encouraging things about those building permit numbers is that they represent a diversity of construction types across the city, and that includes infill and redevelopment in our downtowns. So thanks to Glenn Norton and some of the members of the urban renewal team, as well as the tourism and culture team, we're really starting to see that infill and redevelopment take off in our downtowns across the city. I just pulled sort of at random a couple of examples here of some of the projects that have recently come on stream or about to come on stream. And I was asked previously in Mike's initial budget presentation to look at what some of the assessment value uplift is for some of those projects. So that's what the numbers indicate here underneath each of these pictures. So the project in Dundas Street, that's where the Starbucks is, represents an increase in assessment, net increase in assessment of $20,000 per year. Stabage Streets, 217,000. The federal building down the street, 510. Up in Water Down, the Brown Dog Cafe, $30,000 a year. This is just a couple of examples I threw out here. I mean, if you add that up, that's about $800,000 per year in increased assessment. That's about a half percent increase, a half percent levy impact, or sorry, .1% on the levy, just from those four projects alone. And if you take something, one of the larger ones like the Knott, the anticipation on the Knott is about $3 million at the end of all five phases in increased assessed value from a project of that size, which that one project alone represents about a half percent on the levy. And the revitalization that's happening in the downtowns is also reflected in a number of the new small businesses that we see opening up. This is by no means an exhaustive list, I just asked Mike Marini, who's the marketing coordinator in economic development, to come up with a list of, just off the top of his head, of some of the project businesses that opened up over the past year. And I think the important thing to note here is that, you know, this kind of activity doesn't just happen. It happens, there's a lot of staff effort in our department and across the city that goes into making this kind of development happen. So the work that Eileen Maloney does, supporting the BIAs in urban renewal, the work that they do promoting the downtown, bringing in realtors and investors and taking them on bus tours around the downtown, showing them where some of the opportunities are for investment. Looking at, you know, our marketing team has generated several hundred thousand dollars worth of earned media with the outreach they do with, to the Star, to the Huffington Post, to the Globe and Mail, the incentive programs. And each of these businesses will also touch upon all the different divisions in the department. So again, this activity that we're seeing reflects the work of our licensing team, of our tourism and culture team, of planning and growth management, building division, all different parts of our division touch on all of this development activity. One of the priorities for our department is growing the non-residential assessment base, I'll talk a bit more about that in a moment. As Mike indicated in his initial presentation, we kicked off the budget process, we're sitting at about 13% non-residential assessment in the city, which is, which lags behind what some of our comparable municipalities have achieved. They're more in the 16, 17% range. And he also spelled out the challenge of increasing that non-residential assessment base. A 1% increment represents about 28 canned breads coming to the city. So that's a major undertaking, that's a major challenge to grow that non-residential assessment base. And we did have a number of success stories in 2014, and again, this is not a complete list, but a partial list of some of the, the column on the left-hand side is some of the new employers that came to town in 2014. They range from some smaller companies, Apollonia Health is four staff sitting in the McLaster Innovation Park, TSL Aerospace is about eight employees, up to some larger ones like Dependable IT is forecasting over 300 employees, Navistar, 50, 60 employees. That's the new businesses that have come to town, the two columns on the right-hand side represent some of the expansions that we've seen in 2014. In total, about 1.3 million square feet of new non-residential space, either built or leased in the city in 2014. Growth in our greenfield areas also continued in 2014. Our planning team completed the secondary plan for Winona and planning and growth management, but between those two divisions, we approved and registered 14 new subdivisions representing almost 1,800 residential units across the city. And it really is across the city. The largest area was in Stony Creek, where we had about 1,000 of those units. We also saw units in Hamilton, Water Down, Glanbrook and Ancaster. A big part of the economic development success in the city that cities enjoy can be traced, I think, directly back to the work of the tourism and culture team. And I think this is a linkage that's not really talked about enough and not really stressed enough. And I threw this quote up here, it's a quote that I actually use in a number of the presentations I've been doing out in the community, and it's from Christopher Hume, who's the city's reporter, the city's journalist at the Toronto Star. And what he said is that "culture is to the contemporary city what roads, sewers and bridges were in the 19th and early 20th centuries." I find that a very powerful statement because it looks at culture and arts as really critical infrastructure to a vibrant and growing city. And I think it's a key reason why two years ago, council made the decision to bring tourism and culture into the planning and economic development department in order to demonstrate that linkage and how integral culture and arts is to the economic growth of the city. And Anna and her team continue to rack up a number of successes to build that cultural infrastructure. Just a few of them listed here, we had three new public art projects completed in 2014, including this one in the picture, The Eagles Among Us. Two that are in fabrication, which will be installed in 2015, that includes the new piece out front of the farmer's market. Four new ones initiated in Dundas and Ancaster and a couple in downtown Hamilton, which makes for 40 public art projects completed since 2009. Her teams also, in 2014, managed 34 projects to maintain and revitalize the city's various historic assets for a total of about $4 million in capital investments. We added 900 addresses to the heritage registry, completed the tourism strategy, a number of special events, major events, and bringing in conferences to the city that will bring in new visitors and tourists to the city. All of this is part of that culture and arts infrastructure, that really, I think, is part of the foundation of why we're seeing the rejuvenation that's happening in Hamilton. And done on a shoestring, I should add, the public art program, that's one person, that's one FTE we have delivering that. The heritage resource management program, we've got two FTEs who are project managing those 34 projects. Another team in PED, whose contribution to growth and economic development I don't think is talked about enough, is parking and bylaw services. And sorry, this is a bit of a digression, but this was hammered home for me back in the fall, I was actually down in Colombia, and I was touring around Medellin, Colombia. And I was walking around with an advisor to the former mayor, and he was telling me about sort of all the activities and what they did to actually take that city, which was sort of renowned for being a bastion of drugs and crime and gang warfare, and the kind of things they did to now become one of the most celebrated cities in, certainly in Latin America and around the world. CBC just did a whole documentary on Medellin and the revitalization they've experienced. And the things he talked about to his tribute to the success of their city was about how they emphasize things like removing blighted properties, enforcing property standards, removing trash from city streets, formalizing small businesses. And that's when it really kind of sunk in for me, just how important the work that people in Marty and Bill and Ken's shop do, and how that is so critical to the growth in the city. And then I hear it myself again, as I've been talking to a lot of the developers and business owners, especially in downtown Hamilton, and they talk about how important that is to the image of that neighborhood and how, you know, some of the challenges they face with that image, and how key it is to have those issues addressed in order to attract businesses to lease in their buildings or residents to buy in their buildings. And they continue to have had a strong 2014, as they have in the past. Over 13,000 complaints for property standards and yard maintenance were dealt with through that group. 65 buildings added to the vacant building registry, monitoring well over 200 others. The Trash Talk program, which is a pilot program, dealt with over 1,600 legal dumping complaints, and in 2014, just over 50 charges were laid. Another economic development success story from 2014 is our waterfront, which took several steps forward in 2014 to the goal of becoming shovel-ready by 2018. Some of the highlights from 2014, some of the last major planning pieces are now in place. So council adopted the Burton Tiffany Urban Design Study, the James North Mobility Hub Study. We've got the OPA for Piers 5 to 7 to implement the Recreation Master Plan, as well as a number of the agreements that are needed before we can actually start on some of the key infrastructure projects. So the Pier 7, 8 Marina Management Agreement, the agreement for the pipeline relocation, functional design for the Harbor West and RYC Marina. And I think the really exciting messaging here is that after several years of planning studies and negotiations, we're ready for the waterfront, we're ready for implementation, we're ready for development on the, to move forward on development on the waterfront. And so you'll see that reflected in our budget and our work plan, is really focus on some of the key implementation steps. The disposition of the real estate assets we have, the development of the infrastructure, the community engagement program, the facility management, that's what our priorities are going to be for 2015. Again, with that goal of being shovel-ready by 2018 and achieving the forecasted $7.5 million in assessment revenues from the waterfront at full build-out. Lastly, I'll talk about Open for Business. This was a major initiative and priority of the department over the past couple of years. In 2014, we released our first annual report card on the 69 different actions that are outlined in the Open for Business Action Plan. Some of the key actions related to the work of our business and licensing facilitators in the Small Business Enterprise Center downstairs, beginning of customer service training for our staff, communication and promoting the one-stop-for-business, and starting to establish now metrics and performance indicators for some of the key steps in our approvals process. So turning to 2015, our focus and our priority remains economic growth and development. We know that council's made economic growth a top priority. We know that revenue growth is the key to achieving a number of the city's other priorities, whether it's housing or roads or transit, parks, all the other services that city provides. And we know that our department is the engine that councils are relying upon to drive that growth. So that economic growth mandate is the lens through which we looked at our 2015 work plan, and it's the lens through which we looked at our budget priorities. So in the next couple of slides, I've, and identified here as well, the areas that we think we need to focus on in order to achieve that economic growth mandate. We need to focus on faster, more predictable approvals, providing outstanding customer service, creating a community where people want to live, do business and invest, and attracting and retaining and developing the most talented workforce we can get in the city. Those are really the four key things that we want to focus on, the four things that we think are most fundamental to delivering economic growth in the city. So the next couple of slides, I'll talk about some of our 2015 work plan priorities, and I grouped them in three different areas. First of all, I've got those activities that we'll be doing in 2015 that are about getting investment and economic development opportunities to our door. So everything that we'll do to attract investment to the city. Then I'll talk about getting those opportunities actually through the door, from turning from opportunity into actual built projects. And lastly, opening up the next door, which is everything we'll be doing to get ready for the next wave of development opportunities. So first off is our 2015 projects that are about getting these opportunities to the door. This is about attracting businesses, attracting residents, attracting immigrants, and retaining the businesses, the residents and the immigrants that we already have in the city. I think council will probably agree, this has been one of the department's greatest strengths over the past couple of years, driven largely by our economic development division and our tourism and culture division. And in 2015, we have a number of initiatives that are designed to continue our success in this area. And economic development is the continuation of the Global Hamilton Program, an update to the economic development strategy. We're reviewing the community improvement plan for the downtown and the incentive programs that go along with it. A major priority for EkDev will be the workforce development strategy and the foreign direct investment strategy, and also the youth entrepreneur program in the Small Business Enterprise Center. In tourism and culture, council already heard at the last meeting about the public art master plan review, reviewing our special event strategy, expanding the built heritage inventory to get additional heritage buildings onto the registry, implementation of the cultural plan, implementation of the tourism strategy, and again, some major tourism-based events, most notably in 2015, will be the Junos. And in parking and bylaw services, continuing the business licensing program, property standards enforcement, the Trash Talk program, rental housing enforcement, and monitoring of the vacant building registry. So the next area I want to talk about is all the different activities that our department does to turn those opportunities into real built projects. So getting those opportunities and getting them through the door of our approvals process and made real. And as I'll talk about later on in the presentation, you know, this is really a focused area for us in 2015, this is an area we're looking to focus some of the investment in 2015, and really one of our top priorities. That includes the continuation of Open for Business. So council has reconstituted the Open for Business Subcommittee, and we've worked with that Subcommittee on a number of issues, looking at a more detailed process audit, taking a look at a couple of our specific development approvals processes and making sure that they're being, that we're as efficient as we can be. Again, establishing approvals benchmarks, so we can give the development community some certainty about what the approval timelines are, training and development of staff, and continuation of the implementation of the Amanda Project. In planning, we've got the rural zoning bylaw coming to council in a couple of weeks, and after that, we'll be initiating the mixed-use commercial zoning bylaw, a number of OPAs to facilitate redevelopment, as well as site plan approval guidelines. In growth management, the finalization of the comprehensive development engineering guidelines, and in parking bylaw services, council has asked us to take a look at the licensing and fee bylaws, so those reviews will be happening in 2015. Lastly, we have a number of projects that are intended to open up the doors to the next wave of development. So if you remember that earlier slide where I talked about the building permits that we had over the past few years, that's a very positive indicator, but it's a trailing indicator. It represents work that was actually done many years in advance of that to get the city ready for that development. So this is on this slide, some of the activities we'll be doing in 2015, that's really about being ready for that next wave of development that will turn into building permit stats 10, 15 years in the future. A big part of that will be our waterfront team. I mentioned already, their goal is to be shovel-ready by 2018, and so there's a considerable work that has to be done now in order to be ready for that. So in 2015, we'll be looking at detailed design and construction of Pier 7 shoreline, design for the docks, the urban design study for Pier 8, as well as a number of pieces of infrastructure, the sanitary pumping station, Marina Dock replacement, we'll be launching a fairly aggressive community engagement program, and looking at a disposition strategy for the city's real estate assets on the waterfront. In planning, we have the site plan control guidelines, the province is going to be rolling out its provincial plan reviews in 2015, so that will be a major part of our work, is to participate in those. Review of the downtown secondary plan, and then starting to look at our greenfield areas with the Alfreda Growth Node and looking about grids too, and that next phase of regional growth planning. In growth management, we have the Alfreda Subwatershed Study, the Airport Employment District Growth District, Downtown Servicing Study, the Scooby Studies in Water Down, or sorry, in Winona. In economic development, the Bayfront Strategy, implementation of Barton-Kennedy Strategy, development of our business parks, and in tourism and culture, the tourism strategy. So these are a number of the initiatives that we'll be looking at to create the conditions for that next wave of development. So here, talk about some of the challenges to achieving that economic growth mandate. And first and foremost, and this won't be new because it was talked about last year in the budget process as well, is the fiscal model for the department. And the fiscal model is just, it's not sustainable. For the past few years, we've been relying heavily on reserves, on capital funding, on fines and on gapping to deliver our programs and services. And so And so that fiscal model is something we'll talk about in some of the later slides. Another one of the barriers we face to having faster, more predictable approvals, which is one of our key objectives, is the workload that our approvals staff is facing, and also investing in training and development of staff. So that'll be a major challenge that we're addressing in 2015. We also, as I said, we had a goal of being shovel-ready on the waterfront by 2018, and an ambitious work plan in 2015 in order to get there. But at the moment, right now in PED, we're doing all of that with one staff person. So that becomes a major pressure and challenge to us as well. We need to make sure our policy framework's up to date. Again, that'll be a particular challenge this year with the province reviewing its growth plan, its Green Belt Plan, Niagara Scarpment Plan. So in 2015, we'll be investing a fair bit of time in our planning group to make sure that Hamilton's views are reflected in those, views are reflected in those reviews, participating in the province's engagement process. We're also looking at developing our own community engagement process to operate in parallel, so the community can weigh in on the position that council ultimately adopts as Hamilton's position on those provincial reviews. Our Economic Development Team, we're facing limited availability of shovel-ready employment lands for when investors, for both new business coming in, as well as businesses seeking to expand. So those are some of the key challenges we face in 2015 to, again, achieve that economic growth mandate that we've set for ourselves and that council has set for us. This slide is our department's net operating budget by division.
Mr. Thorndike, for one minute, I think I've got four of my colleagues on the table have questions, maybe on that first portion of your presentation. Hey, Councilor Farr, Councilor Brenda Johnson, Councilor Chad Collins, and Councilor Tom Jackson. Okay, so I have some more. So on that portion of it, Councilor Farr.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and thank you, Jay, for your, I believe, first full-budget Slide 5, I just wanted to make mention, and maybe you can confirm for those around this table who may not know, about six weeks ago, the five phases for the site plan for the Canot, which you referenced, even though it's not on this page, was approved. So they're shovel-ready, they're building permits there for Phase 1. And so when you're talking about the impact of half percent levy, which is for one project of five phases, pretty significant, there's no more delays.
Yeah, but they have their site plan approval for all five phases.
Okay, on 7, and this is just, if you can confirm through the deputy mayor, these are just, this is just a sampling, this list of non-residential development, on slide 7, sorry?
Yes, through the deputy mayor, that's correct. It's a partial list.
Talking faster than you. So I'm wondering if at some point, and maybe after following the budget process, and maybe you or someone in our planning committee can remind me, if we could look at, unless you already have it, through you, deputy mayor, statistically, what's the total number of jobs with these new companies? Is that something we have already done or something we could do?
Through the deputy mayor, we could compile that. I've got numbers for some of these, but we'd just take a bit to compile them and...
That jobs, it's probably a statistic a lot of people would be interested in. On the, through you, deputy mayor, are you going to focus in the coming slides on the slide 13, the 2015 initiatives? I'm interested in learning more about the faster, more predictable approvals and how that might tie in with, I believe we have an ongoing Neville study, for lack of a better term. Maybe you could explain what that is and where we are with that and how that fits in with this, these bullets. Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Through, yeah, through the deputy mayor. We brought in Ian Neville, I guess it was just before Christmas, it was in November, I think it was, to do, to do sort of an interview-based approach to looking at our processes and basically giving him some advice as to where we should be focusing our efforts in 2015. So originally, I think he was planning on doing, I think, 30 or 40 interviews, ended up doing over 100. He met with city staff, he met with a number of members of council, he met with sort of developers of all sizes and types out in the community. He has provided a draft report, that, a draft report to sort of a Subcommittee of SMT who's been looking at it, so that's myself, Chris Murray, Mike Zagarek, and Jerry Davis. So we have just recently kind of met to start going over the draft report. There's still some work that Ian will have to do to finalize that, may require a couple more sit downs with some of the senior staff at the city. I can tell you, in terms of where some of the key recommendations are coming out of that work, it's, not surprisingly, they suggested there's a number of different areas to focus on. So one is looking at the processes themselves, so that's why I mentioned as part of the 2015 work plan, we'll be looking at a couple of specific approvals processes themselves, and doing more of a deep dive analysis of those processes. He talked about investing in our people and making, and getting our frontline staff more able to deal with some of the wide range of issues that come in, give more certainty in terms of when developers are coming in, in terms of what the expectations of them are for the various approvals that they have to go through. So that's why I talked earlier about an emphasis on training and development in 2015, so that will be key as well. And also looking at technology. So we are, I think, behind in terms of best practice, in terms of technology in our approvals process. We've already started over a year ago developing the Amanda Project, and that will be rolling out hopefully by the end of 2015. We'll have our municipal licensing, our planning, our building, and our growth management teams operating on the Amanda system.
Clearly it helped, informed, and continues to help inform some of the objectives that you have before us, that you'll create. I'm just a quick question on the building reserve, unless through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, is that coming up? I know it was very healthy last year. We often talk about the billion-dollar building permits and how that relates to that budget. And I don't know if now is the time, Mr. Deputy Mayor, to inquire, to maybe Ed VanderWint or to Jason, but where that reserve is at, and are we getting maximum benefit in terms of funding building staff and projects from it?
Yes, through Mr. Deputy Mayor, I believe the balance, the forecast balance at the end of 2014 is, is it 16, Ed?
VanderWint?
Through the chair, it's in the 15 million range. At the end of, into this year, it'll be the $16 million range.
And so last year, I think it was the second, you had two phases of hiring much-needed, I was very supportive, and so was this body, staff. Ed, can you remind us through you, deputy mayor, how many new building inspectors and building staff you've hired that are funded through this non-levy impact reserve?
Since, through the chair, July 2012, when I first took a look at it, we've hired 12 new staff to present date. On that, it's on the reserve, it's actually on the revenue on the building permits.
Right, but that reserve comes from revenue, if I'm not mistaken, through you?
That is correct.
Okay, so, and how are they coming along? I believe more than half of them now, I guess, should be well in stride, filling a void that brought us to this point in the first place. Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Through the chair, our records show that in 2006, the Building Division had 94 staff. By, near 2010, we're down to 84 staff, and now we're back up to 99 staff. So we're three ahead of where we were in 2006. We're growing cautiously, because we know that rises in construction often drop off in years to come, but we're doing steady growth and addressing the needs as they arise.
And has it helped with efficiencies in your department, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
If I may be so proud to speak of that, tremendously. We're very pleased with the work that's come out of our staff.
Also, nice new glasses to our chief building official. Couldn't help but notice, and as I glanced over, he shops at the same shop as you, Jason. Thank you for the questions. I'll have more after the part two of the presentation.
Thank you, Councilor Farr. Councilor Brenda Johnson is not here. Councilor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, excuse me, through you, Jay, I'm just looking at the information that you contained in the first section, and those building permits on the chart ranged from a low of about 4,000 to a high of 8,000. And then I'm looking at past information, I think, that our finance department has illustrated or provided to us, and that is that the residential sector, specifically the suburban residential units that we're seeing as part of the annual, I think we're up to what, 1,600 or 1,800 now in terms of new residential units, is driving the assessment growth. And so you've, you had a very extensive list there in terms of new companies that have moved in. You've reiterated the fact, through you, Mr. Chairman, that we're emphasizing the non-residential growth component is what we'd like to see. And we're, we've been stuck at that 1% assessment growth figure. So for as much as we're up to the, you know, record building permits in the, across the board, and we're seeing the, reaching the billion-dollar mark now, I think, on average for the last, or three of the last four years, four of the last five now, sorry, it's not translating into new tax revenues. And so what are we doing to shift gears in that regard? So there's the emphasis on non-residential growth, we see new cranes in the core, we see lots of business activity, but it's not translating into new tax dollars for us. What's the plan in that regard, through you?
So through, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I mean, it is generating the assessment growth. One of the issues we face is it's one step forward, one step back, so then we get hit by the reassessments that then bring the assessment value down again. So the new development is generating new assessment revenues, but that's just allowing us to keep up because of the pressure on reassessments. I think in terms of what we want to do is, you know, we very clearly have a focus on non-residential assessment, we know that's the priority. We're going to be looking through, one of the things we'll be talking about when we talk about the enhancements budget is in our business facilitation unit, and having some of those resources dedicated strictly to non-residential assessment. The other area that I think generates some, let's call it profitable growth for the city is the infill and intensification of redevelopment. That's why I've been digging deeper into those numbers in terms of the assessment increases that those developments are providing on vacant, underutilized sites that are currently not either generating no assessment or limited assessment. So I think those will be two areas where we really want to focus on, because they do generate, again, for lack of a better term, profitable growth for the city.
And thank you for that. Where do we sit now in terms of the provincial numbers and our forecasts? As far as I can recall, we're not meeting those population numbers. And conversely, I don't think we're meeting the intensification targets either in terms of the new units within the existing urban area. Are we well under those, and will those numbers, are they part of the reviews that you spoke of earlier in terms of the new provincial targets that'll be established in 215, I thought I heard?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, yeah, those are part of the provincial review. I don't expect significant decreases in what those population and job targets are. I think one of the issues we face is, you're right, we're generating about 1,800 housing units a year. If you look at our DC and our grids forecasts, we want to be around 3,300, so we're well off that mark. And it's a specific market, we actually did some analysis in terms of what that 1,500 additional units could mean in terms of assessment value for the city, and it's just under $7 million per year, is basically the, it's money, I think, that we're leaving on the table. It's development interest that I think is out there. I think the builders are ready, willing, and able to build that. I think it's assessment that we want and we need. What we have to invest in is our approvals process, getting those opportunities through the door, getting them approved, and that's why I said that's going to be a major focus for us in 2015.
Councilor Collins, we have City Manager Chris Murray.
Just if I can add to this a little bit, through you, deputy mayor, I know we have a focus on trying to grow the non-residential tax base for a very good reason, but I think we've got to be just a little careful in terms of the residential, because don't assume that residential doesn't create net positive tax growth either. I think the other thing to keep in mind here too, and there's a relationship obviously with the residential and the non-residential, in that we generate, or the development industry here in Hamilton generates thousands upon thousands of jobs every year when we approve construction of residential, non-residential. So those jobs obviously allow people to kind of, you know, maintain a decent quality of life, which also allows them to purchase things in this community, which then sustains or creates demand for the commercial activity. So I know we get, we're very focused on not being solely relying on residential, but all I'm saying, in light of what we should be able to accomplish in a way of residential development here, as I think Jason has pointed out, you know, we're in the order of about 18 to 2,000, and we maybe should be in the order of about 3,000 to 3,300. There is a positive tax story to talk about there, and I just think we need to not lose sight of that and not lose sight of the thousands of jobs that the development industry generates for this community, which then translates into commercial activity. So just, and Jason's point, and why we've hired someone to kind of look at our processes and our people, I mean, again, we're all invested in this, this isn't just Jason, as he pointed out, Jerry, Mike, Zagarek, myself, we're seeing a wave in Hamilton, as I've said before, we haven't seen in a generation, and we want to absolutely, with these people that are sitting beside me, behind me, we want to absolutely nail that wave and get as much of that growth coming into Hamilton as possible.
Thanks for that, Chris. Through you, Mr. Chairman, so, you know, we've certainly celebrated our successes on the revenue side and growth side, but you highlighted, Jason, through your presentation, that, and I think the answer to my question was, we're seeing significant reassessment numbers come in, appeals that are coming from our large industrial users, and that's hurting us on the growth side. When does that, and it's probably not a question for you, but maybe for Mr. Zagarek or Chris, when do we see that tide stemming in terms of, you know, finally, all the appeals are in, everyone understands what they should be paying, we certainly can't limit the number of appeals that come in in the future, but at some point in time, that has to stop, the trend of the tens of millions of dollars in tax reductions eventually has to stop. Where do we sit with that process?
Eric?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, as Councilor Collins has appropriately commented, is we can affect the ability for commercial or residential property owners to appeal. What I hope to present to council later this month is some positive trending with respect to assessment growth. You may recall that we've assumed 1% assessment growth in our preliminary 2015 budget. In previous years, our gross assessment growth might have been in that range of 1.2. So for instance, in 2014, I would have reported 1.2. The net was 0.8 after, for instance, there was a positive reassessment as it relates to US Steel that negated about 0.3% of that 1.2. In terms of the potential for continued challenges, in terms of reassessment, we aren't seeing the magnitude of the US Deals, Arslers, in terms of our risks going forward. We are seeing some commercial, and these are province-wide, whether it's Tim Hortons or some of the food chains who are taking a concerted effort province-wide to review their assessments. So again, I hope to come back to committee later this month with an update with respect to our assessments, as well as our supplementary taxes for 2014. And I hope that we'll be able to report that we aren't seeing the same negative impact of reassessments as we have in the past few years.
Thanks for that, Mike. My last question would be the provincial targets then. So we have the number, 780,000 people residing in Hamilton by 2041. I thought our last update illustrated we were well off of that in terms of the numbers, the number of new residents and the net gains we're making. Where do we sit right now with that number? Are we, just as you compared the housing starts to what we should be getting in the provincial numbers, where are we with population?
Through, Deputy Mayor, I don't have a, I know we are off on that number, I can't give you an exact number percentage, I'm not sure if Tony or anyone on the front bench there has that number at your fingertips, if I could get back to you on what that is.
Okay, thanks. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Collins. Councilor Brenda Johnson, please.
Thank you, and thank you to the previous speakers who asked a lot of my questions. Just really quickly, because I'm going to get you back to slide number nine, please. Thank you. David Zimmer is the gentleman that used to be the contact person to getting these things done, and we've got some projects that are going on in Ward 11, some are completed, some are not. Who's now the new David?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, the new David is Julia, and I'm going to get her last name wrong, Van...
And something?
Yes.
You from Winona, that's what we...
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the council, Julia Van der Lande Vries.
Thank you.
Vanderland?
Vanderland.
Great. Thank you very much. That's my question.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson. Councilor Tom Jackson.
Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and so far, well done, Jason, your first full-budget presentation. Just a quick comment, and then a quick series of questions. A comment, Jason, on page two, your overall, your overall team, your organizational chart. I just want to commend you, coming in new as the general manager of Planning Economic Development. I see up there seven darn good directors, all specialists in their field, and I'm so pleased that you've inherited a great team, and to your credit, speaks to your leadership, you've recognized that team and still in place moving forward. So I just wanted, Mr. Deputy Mayor, make that comment to start with. Series of quick questions, Jason. All I'm looking for is either explanation, comment from you, or plan of action that might be... might be on the radar. And some of these, I'm going to just kind of bring them close to home in terms of what I feel the average, everyday constituent may or may not experience. First of all, Alfreda versus 20 Roadies versus the OMB. I know that's probably a future in-camera update. You did put a bullet point up there, recognizing it. So can I just presume, under now your general managership, I think the last update we had on that one was when your predecessor was still here, will there be some in-camera update either Planning Committee or GIC in the future as we're trying to resolve that matter with whatever the growth-related acreage is going to be with the province of Ontario versus where we first started with grids about eight, nine years ago? Mr. Deputy Mayor, through Jason, I think he probably, hopefully gets the gist of my question.
Yes, I do. And through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I think the core of that question is properly dealt with in-camera, and I think we will be reporting back to council on that shortly. In the 2015 work plan, one of the major pieces of work we do have is the Alfreda sub watershed study. What that will help us get a handle on is what is the, what's the net developable acreage that we have available to accommodate growth and development in that area.
Perfect. Thank you, Jason. I'll let my colleagues representing more of the rural areas, if they wish to comment further, but since we have our constituents we represent and we all have acquaintances or people we know that live in other parts of the city, your rural official plan review you're doing, Jason, just a quick question, I've mentioned this to you before in a one-on-one, there seems to be a lot of nervousness out there. So, Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Jason, just maybe a comment as to where this whole review is going, please.
Yes, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So the review of the rural zoning bylaws, it's gone through a couple of rounds of consultation now, it's going to be coming back to Planning Committee on March 31st. And we actually have an extended Planning Committee meeting that day. We're going to be having a special, a couple of hours blocked off in the afternoon and also an evening session to deal with deputations from the public. And in advance of that, we'll be releasing a new draft of the zoning bylaw. I can tell you that the key issues have been around appropriate employment uses in the rural area, a lot of discussion around some of the existing rural industrial uses that we have, issues around home-based businesses, landscape businesses, all those types of things balancing against some of the directions that we have to meet from the provincial growth plan. So those are some of the issues I've been wrestled with.
Okay, thank you for that comment. Mr. Deputy Mayor, waterfront team. Now, Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, you say you basically have one FTE in the past, quarterbacked by Chris Phillips, excellent work. I have seen the likes of the Aldors, the Lawrence Stasiacs, others from staff who have been part of, if you will, a waterfront development team in concert with a great partner we have in the Hamilton Waterfront Trust from project management development end. I understand the talent of Gavin Norman is over there. City manager's office has provided some resources. So I'm a little perplexed when you say I basically got folks, one guy, and I got this big Pier 7 and 8 project along with the West Harbour developments in front of me. Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Jason.
Yes, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Yes, I suppose the wish is I have one dedicated staff person in PED to deal with that, and so Chris Phillips does continue to be the quarterback of that. You know, the team, we're starting to flesh out what that team needs to look like in order to get to that 2018 shovel-ready state. A lot of those resources will continue to be drawn off other existing staff within my department. So look at some of the planning function, doing some of the design works, and the communications function, finance, admin support, some of those types of things will continue to draw upon existing staff resources. As we'll get to in the, when we have the discussion on the enhancement budget, there are two positions that we're looking at, which is functions and actually we just, we don't have in the department, that we need to have dedicated to a particular waterfront team. And that's on the PED side. On the public work side, they have established their waterfront team led by Gavin Norman. They actually are working closely with the Waterfront Trust to deliver on some of the infrastructure projects. So I'm talking about the PED side and managing the various moving pieces that have to be managed in order to get to the shovel-ready goal.
Thank you for that explanation, that distinction as well. Three quick more questions, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Balance of residential growth. Jason, I know that the, I sense a trend to more intensification and within urban core development type of projects where existing services are in place. But I've always been one, lucky to be at this table, who's always promoted a balance of residential growth. Because if people who are coming to Hamilton wish to choose to not live in an intense part of the urban area, but wish to live in a different part of our community, I've always supported a balance of residential growth. Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Jason, maybe just for a comment and where you see our future residential growth going as well.
Yes, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I agree, and I think that balance is reflected in the work plan, that we've got priorities related to, as I said, the Alfreda growth node, getting grids two up and running, the sub watershed study in Alfreda. Those are big parts of the 2015 work plan, as is, as our projects like updating the downtown secondary plan, the downtown servicing strategy, reviewing the downtown CIP. So we are recognizing that balance growth in terms of the priorities we've set out for 2015.
Okay, thanks, Jason. And last two questions, these are the ones now close to home in my humble opinion for the everyday constituent. And Jason, you were good enough to come with me and with Director Bill Janson as a wonderful chauffeur, we did a tour about in Ward 6 last summer, and we visited a number of sites. Two issues. One site where literally a residential home is on the verge of structural collapse and deterioration, and I've got an entire street of people who are honest, law-abiding, look after their properties, Trillium Award winners, and they are just so frustrated with the lack of city resolve on this one particular eyesore like a Sanford and Son in the middle of this street or neighborhood. You said that you and Bill are working on that type of thing, maybe with some zoning bylaw official reviews this year. Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Jason for a comment, please.
Yes, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I think, you know, to one of those sites that I remember in particular, I think as we start to look at our residential zoning, that's more of a 20, probably 16, 17 work plan item, is when some of the site-specific issues associated with that site could potentially be dealt with. On the other site you're referring to, I know that, you know, my building staff, my bylaw enforcement staff, a number of staff have been out, and you've had a couple of public meetings to talk about that. It's, I'd say it's not lack of resolve, it's more lack of tools to address what some of the neighbors' concerns are on that site. But it continues to be very much on our radar.
So, and that tied in dovetailed with the more of the, I'm seeing where courts and neighborhoods, nice neighborhoods are seeing as well, Jason, just a kind of an offshoot of that earlier one, this is my last question, Mr. Deputy Mayor, of absentee landlords, or let's call them out-of-town landlords, who are buying up a lovely home and instead of now just that single family living there with maybe the kids and grandparents, it's now being rented out as some kind of a multi-res. And I'll tell you again, once again, it's an offshoot of what's frustrating neighborhoods, communities, streets, courts. And again, they're looking to the city to ensure compliance and that there's a monitor of some kind of enforcement in place so that whatever is done is done according to bylaw. And, Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Jason, again, I think you get the gist of what I'm saying. People look to their councillor's office, to the department, municipal law, whatever. How do we keep a good control of that? Or are we subject to provincial policy places to grow, which says because of intensification, well, councillor, these kind of things are going to pop up more? We just need to keep a check on them. Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Jason, please.
Yes, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. A couple of thoughts kind of spring to mind there because there's a couple of issues that you raise. I mean, some of it relates to property standards and property standards enforcement issues. And in the time I've been on the job, from what I've seen is we have a pretty phenomenal enforcement team that deals with those issues pretty quickly, pretty diplomatically. And I think we're lucky to have that team. On some of the, you know, I think you're hinting at some of the design issues around maybe the quality of development that's going in, some of the quality of additions and expansions happening. I think, you know, we've been looking through the UHOP at being more rigorous in terms of our urban design expectations on new development. So I think we're starting to have the tools where as we see those kinds of applications coming forward, we can put a stronger urban design lens and make sure that new development's actually contributing to improvement of quality of life and quality of streets.
That's very encouraging to hear. Thanks for your indulgence, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Counselor Partridge, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And Jason, thank you. I've had the privilege as Chair of Planning Committee to work with you and your team very closely. And previously, there was an issue raised or a question raised about the provincial growth review that is coming up. And as well, there will be the green belt review. Now, we know that it's slated for 2015. What I don't know, and I don't think anyone around this table knows yet, is just what is that process? What is that review going to look like? Can you speak to that, please?
Yes, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. We know a couple of things. The province has said that it's going to be an integrated review. So what we're expecting is a discussion paper, white paper of some sort, that will combine the growth plan, the green belt, the Okers and Rain, the Niagara Scarpment Plan, not the Niagara Scarpment, the Okers and Rain, Green Belt and Growth Plan into one review. I understand that they are developing a consultation process that will include community meetings. Last I heard, they were talking 13, 14, 15 community meetings across the Greater Golden Horseshoe. So I would hope coming out of that, we'd have one in Hamilton, but I don't have any confirmation of that. In terms of what staff is doing, you know, will we bring forward to council a recommendation in terms of the position that the city should take on all of those plans? And we are talking about doing our own parallel community engagement process so that members of the public can of course comment direct to the province, and they should do that. We also want them to be able to come into us and feed into the city's position that the city will take on each of those reviews.
Okay, and thank you. I think, I'm very pleased to hear that because I think it is critically important, especially with what we've been going through with the rural zoning changes and the, you know, the little bit of angst that's out there in the community. I've had quite a bit of residents asking me what's going to happen with the green belt review. And of course, with many of our wards being, majority of it, you know, being in the green belt, there is interest in being part of that. And certainly, as councillor, I want to participate in that. So appreciate if you could keep us informed, just, you know, give us a heads up, just what will that process look like? I know many of us will want to hold public meetings, and if the city has a process, and what I just heard was that you're planning on doing, allowing for that feedback to come to us, to go to the province as well, I think that is, I think that's critically important. And if I can just add, councillor Jackson raised, it's not here, but he raised some great questions about the rural zoning changes and the fact that there's still some concerns out there. I do want to commend your staff, certainly Heather Travis and Joanne Hickey Evans. They have, they have really done, I think, a good job in meeting, personally meeting and talking to many, many, many residents, I would wager probably over 100. And there's still opportunity to do that. So the March 31st public meeting, which is going to be a special meeting of planning, will be opportunity for delegations to come in, people to come in and speak to it. But between now and then, there's also, I'd like to think, opportunity for staff to still deal with that. Could you comment on that, please?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. You're right, and the planning staff are still continuing to meet with individuals. I wouldn't want to try to estimate the number of meetings that that team has had with individuals. I know there's been at least three or four rounds of public open houses and meetings as well. So it has been a very comprehensive engagement process, and it's not ending. As you said, between now and March 31st, there's time. And at March 31st, the intent is that that's not a meeting to make a decision or to adopt a position, that's to hear feedback from the public. And then we'll take that away and we'll make whatever revisions are appropriate and then bring that back to a future Planning Committee meeting to actually take a position on it.
And that's important for everyone to realize, that the decision will not be made on March 31st, that staff are allowing for input from people, and then if there are changes that can be made that are appropriate changes, then it will come back, my understanding is late May, early June, it'll come back to the Planning Committee for further deliberation and hopefully some decisions to be made around that. So it's very important, though, that people understand that they can still comment, and even councillors. If you hear from a resident, you hear from someone that, you know, wants to, wants to bring their concerns forward, by all means, they really should. Now is the time, in fact, to reach out to staff. So I appreciate your answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Partridge. Counselor Ferguson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Jason, I too want to congratulate you on a good budget presentation so far. I worry about that next slide, I'm not sure if Woodville may blow up when we see 8.1% come up. But I want to, I've seen Neil's left, but I want to give special recognition to the Economic Development Department again for hitting over $1 billion in building permits. That's truly outstanding. Is it still more than Toronto, Brampton, Burlington, Mississauga?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I believe it's, is it third in, looking to Ed. Do you know what the competitor municipalities are?
Through the Chair, I do not know offhand. I can get it for you if you wish, though.
Well, I suspect Neil's in the other room. He may hear this question, may come in and could answer that question for us. And, or Norm's here, maybe.
Yes, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Neil is actually across the street giving an ethics course to the Economic Development Association of Ontario, so.
Good at that. Excellent.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. It isn't higher than Toronto. Toronto is still more than we are, but I do know we are more than Burlington, and I can definitely get you, we have those stats upstairs, I just don't have them on my fingertips right now.
Burlington, Brampton, Mississauga, that's just the...
Greater than Mississauga, but I do not know Brampton's total. I'll have to check.
So we are greater than Mississauga still?
As of last year, we certainly were. I haven't looked at the 2014 tools yet.
Oh, very good. And Airport Employment Growth District, we cut a deal on that with the two appellants, the Trinity West and the Sylvester Group, and it went to the OMB last week. Did they accept this deal and is this thing now officially finally kaput, over?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I might have to refer that one to Tony.
Through the Chair to the councillor, it's pending. I think this week and next week are the final meetings with the OMB.
Okay, but the hearing of the OMB was over last week?
There was a preliminary hearing last week, but the settlement hasn't been signed off that I'm aware of. They still have to do a presentation.
Okay, I see Steve's moving a bit there. Maybe.
Robichaud, please.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, the board councillor. The settlement was presented at the OMB hearing, but the third-party appellants, they asked additional time to review the settlement, and then there'd be, for an opportunity to cross-examine the city and the landowners' witnesses on the settlement proposal before the board will make a final decision. So the board has not approved the settlement that was adopted by city council with the landowners.
Can you explain what you mean by third-party appellants and how many there are?
As you may remember, recall, it was Hamiltonians for progressive development, I believe was the group. They were one of the objectors to the Airport Employment Growth District.
But they were true, they dropped out.
Those individuals still have an opportunity to question the settlement at the OMB hearing, and then board will make a determination on the merits of the settlement based on the evidence presented by the city, the landowners, and anyone who's concerned or has questions about the settlement.
Okay, because it was reported to council at GIC that those two groups never proceeded with their appeal, they let it go. But it's interesting, there's still third-party appellants.
They just asked an opportunity to review what the settlement was and requested additional time. It's hard to say whether they will come back with any concerns or not, or whether they just simply wanted time to digest what was in the settlement and then make a determination. As I understand, they're not represented by any legal counsel, they have independent professional planning advice, the people who have a concern, so the board was just giving them an opportunity to digest what was in the settlement and then reconvening the board hearing and whether or not they have any questions on the specific nature of the settlement. It's part of the process that anybody, once you get involved in the hearing, is entitled to continue and play out. So until such time as that process plays out and the board makes a determination, it's still not a board-approved settlement.
So based on Tony's comments, we should hear from the OMB in a week or two?
Ideally, through Mr. Chairman, we would get a verbal decision from the board, or the board may reserve its decision and go away and follow up with a written determination. So the board has the right of doing either or. And sometimes, as you know, those written decisions can take several months before we actually see them.
Well, it could be several months yet.
Depending on what the board, through you, Mr. Chairman, what the board determines, once they hear the evidence from the cities and the landowners on the merits of the settlement, if there's evidence, you know, that says the settlement is a bad deal, then the board will have to go away, make a determination as to how to rule on the settlement. The board has to give its order based on the settlement. It's not necessarily a done deal because of the third-party involvement in the process.
Okay. And a question, Mr. Chairman, to Mike. Mike, I was intrigued by your answer to Chad, or Counselor Collins, that there may be some good news on the assessment growth. I recall about five, six years ago, Jackson Square was a depressed property bought up by a depressed landlord. He since sold that, if you believe what you read in the paper, and I do, that it was sold for significantly more than what he paid for it. When is, we took a big write-down on tax revenues because of Jackson Square or the area where we're tenants, what's it called, first, or the city center. Has impact been alerted to these sales and can we expect that to reverse itself now?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Through, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, in terms of commercial space such as Jackson Square, City Centre, the assessment is based on lease rates, not on the market value. So in the case of space that we lease, we provide that information to M-PAC on a regular basis so that we fully capture what the potential assessed value is of that space. So just for clarification, it is based on the lease rates, not on a resale or market value of the property.
So it's not based on a price value like a home is? Your neighbour sells their property, that's the value of your property, it doesn't work that way?
No, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, it's based on the revenue potential. So the rental revenue, and in that, in the case of those properties, it's based on their lease rates that they have with the tenants. In the case of City Centre, it is based on our lease with the landlord for that space.
And Jackson Square's got a number of new tenants in there, including our Health Department, and does that get reviewed automatically? Because not only is there Jackson Square, you saw Jason put up four or five properties, there's probably 50 of them out there now that have seen a rebuild or restructure and reuse. How do we make sure we capture that? Because, you know, the owners are on the ball, they file for an appeal when it goes down, but when it goes back up, how do we make sure we capture that?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, council approved some years ago one additional staff person to our taxation area. So we have now a dedicated staff person who engages M-PAC on a regular basis in terms of knowledge that we have as it relates to positive changes in terms of the market value of properties, whether they're commercial or industrial. That dedicated staff person also works with M-PAC to facilitate getting properties onto the tax roll in a priority order. So for instance, with respect to Canada Bread or Maple Leaf, it's our objective to get big properties such as those onto the tax roll sooner rather than later, and so we work with M-PAC to try to prioritize that work. As well, that dedicated staff person, as it relates to appeals, reviews all the documentation as it relates to assessment appeals. And in the case where the city needs to take a position, we rely on that staff person to assist us in terms of the position that we will take to try to safeguard the interests of our taxpayers and being assessment value in this case.
Okay, so we've seen assessment growth over the last number of years, net of about 1%. I think last year was 0.8, as you said. If we didn't have these appeals, and we still continue to have a billion dollars in building permits, what would that assessment growth look like?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, if I draw you back to 2014, we had gross assessment of about 1.2%, net of 0.8. Just the one appeal with respect to US Steel represented a reduction of 0.3. So a majority of that difference of 1.2 to 0.8 was just that one appeal. I would expect in terms of our pace of growth, both residential and industrial, somewhere in the area of 1.2 to 1.4% in annual gross assessment.
Okay, so a billion dollars in building permits should equal about 1.2% increase in assessment.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'm more focused on the type of development, so commercial, industrial, residential, rather than building permits. So using those forecasts that planning and economic development are providing to us, the 1,750 residential units are single equivalent units, as well as, I believe, our current forecast is 750,000 square feet of non-residential space. So based on those forecasts, recognizing some of the building activity relates to institutional, which does not provide us the assessment gain that commercial residential does.
Thank you, councillor Ferguson. Councillor Marula?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Jason, thanks for the presentation. And just recently, we were at an event at the Spectator Auditorium, and it was related to food. And interestingly enough, even though we're dealing with social service agencies, the issue of permits came up as a complaint. And through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, as you know, and everyone around this table, there's a perception that when anybody wants to do business with the city, it's a very complicated, convoluted process that, in essence, delays, creates obstacles, and in many cases prevents development. And after we met, I know that you had great news with respect to streamlining some of the processes surrounding particularly the one-stop shopping scenario. Can you just expand upon what your plan is to address those issues and how it plays a role in some of the budgetary items that we're faced with?
Sure. Through Mr. Deputy Mayor, there's a few things. One is that, yeah, we know that perception's out there, and we know it's not just perception, there's reality behind that as well. And that's why, you know, that in a nutshell is why in 2015, our focus is going to be on the developed approvals process and how we can, we can make that as efficient as we possibly can. In terms of some of the specific actions we'll be doing in 2015, I mentioned already the idea of a process audit, so we're looking at a couple of specific processes, most likely around site plan, plans of subdivision is to the process that have been suggested where we can look at just, you know, how many hands are touching the files, and can we be more efficient in terms of how we're processing those? What sorts of benchmarks are we going to establish for approvals so that both staff and our clients on the outside know what the expectations are in terms of how long it will take us to turn something around? We are, as I also mentioned, still rolling out the Amanda project, which is going to allow sort of electronic sharing and transferring the files between staff and better tracking of where specific applications are at. By the end of this year, we're hoping to have our four sort of core approvals divisions on there, Parking and Bylaw Services, Building, Planning and Growth Management, should be live on the Amanda system, hopefully by the end of the year. We're also going to be investing pretty heavily in training and development. We're actually just launching, next week, actually, we're taking 25 of our, some of our senior staff, new managers, people recently in sort of leadership roles, and actually it's work that Marty Hazel has spearheaded. We developed a program in cooperation with Mohawk that we're calling Future Ready, and those staff are going to go through an eight-month, one day a month for the next eight months, a very intensive training and development program. That is going to include project management training, communications training, leadership training, so we know we have to invest a lot in our staff as well. So that's, that's a partial answer to some of the things that we'll be looking at in 2015.
And I think what, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, what people are really looking forward to is a streamlined process where there's ownership of the file to one individual so they can establish a relationship. And I know in discussing that particular issue, there is work that needs to be done to develop that. What is the timeframe from start to finish of implementing that type of process?
Through Mr. Deputy Mayor, I mean, it's frankly, I mean, it's a process that will frankly never end. I mean, that's sort of one of those continuous improvement processes that we're embarking on. We're going to see some important milestones hit, I think, this year, but this is, this is not a quick fix, this is not an immediate turnaround. I'd say that, you know, we're looking at over the course of this term of council, making some really significant inroads in terms of the efficiency of our approvals process, and really the predictability of it. Because one of the things we hear a lot from the development community is, of course, you know, they want approvals as fast as you possibly can have them, but they also want realistic expectations and timelines that they can then take to the bank. So that's one of the things we want to work on, is be able to say, you know, this is how long a site plan will take, this is how long a rezoning will take, and to be, you know, 95% of the time, we're within those timelines, and you can, you can take us on our word.
Okay, the other component, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, is that not every client is created equally. So in essence, we have, through you, Mr. Chairman, we have a number of regulars that do business on a day-to-day basis with the city, and everyone in the department would be familiar with them. And then there are those average citizens who, like myself, who if I want to renovate, will come to City Hall, start an application process for a permit. And it seems overwhelming, intimidating, and in many cases, they're told to do A, B, C, and they would be complete, and then, and they leave, they come back with A, B, C completed, to only be told that they forgot D, E, and F. How can we separate or create a distinction between those big players that we're dealing with on a day-to-day basis, that actually make their livelihood from dealing with the city, versus the average citizen who's just finding access to a department for their personal use? And how can we separate the department to ensure that both are serviced and one doesn't interfere with the other?
Yes, through Mr. Deputy Mayor, I think one of the key areas, you're right, there's sort of sophisticated developers who have their consultants who understand the system, and, you know, they may have their issues, but they're used to dealing with the process. And there's a lot of people we see maybe once in their life who are coming in for a first-time business setup. So there, yeah, there are very different needs and levels of sophistication out there in terms of the kinds of applicants that come through our door. I think one of the teams that, you know, I'm excited about, and I think has a very positive track record, is our business facilitation team. They're housed in on the first floor, they work through the planning group. That's a group that we've traditionally given, you know, special files to, so files that are significant strategic priorities for the city. So for example, something like the Canot, Maple Leaf Foods, was delivered by one of these business facilitators, who really become your quarterback through the process. They become that one business card you have of someone at City Hall who's watching out for your file. That is one of the service level enhancements we're looking at, and for the enhancements discussion is to increase that team. We have three right now, three individuals. I'd like to see that team expanded to, look, particularly at a couple of the sectors that you mentioned, so some of the small business owners, particularly some of the applicants in the rural area who don't have the sophistication, don't know the process as well, aren't in for something all the time, again, this might be once or twice in a lifetime that come through the process, who need that extra bit of handholding that frankly, I don't think is appropriate to add on to higher fees. So become sort of a, frankly, a levy-funded service that we can offer for some of those applicants that is above and beyond, we can collect through the basic application fees. So I think we'll talk a bit more of that in the enhancements discussion, but that office in particular, I think, has had a lot of success, and I think is a very good model for how we can deal with some of the folks like you're talking about.
Because I think we need to really focus in on, and to separate, the small business owner versus that of the larger ones we're dealing with. And I think the majority of our complaints are generally generated from the small business owner, the person that is going to start up a restaurant, a small business that deals with us one time, but that one time is a miserable experience. And how we address that from a perceptual standpoint or in reality is so important because perception does become reality when everyone's talking about it. And the reality is, they're saying that we suck in creating a process that's helpful to them. So how we address that is really important, and the fact we do it sooner rather than later is even more important. So I appreciate your time, and I thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, councillor Marula. Councillor Brenda Johnson, second time, please.
Thank you, sorry. I think my questions are more pertaining to further down the presentation. Thank you. I'll wait.
Okay, thank you, councillor Johnson. Councillor Farr?
Councillor Marula, it's a very good point. So much of the enhancements that we will get to, as you noted, general manager Thorne addresses just that, so.
Through you, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, through Deputy Mayor, that's correct. And in particular, the enhancements in the business facilitation group is very specifically intended to look at, as I said, the three key areas that want to sort of provide that sort of enhanced level of service to are the non-residential applicants, small business, and businesses in the rural area.
And through you, Deputy Mayor, you're very confident that that enhancement then would, you know, you've already set the wheels in motion and understand specifically what needs to be addressed, so these perceptions that become realities are addressed in short order as the previous speaker had hoped for?
Yeah, through Mr. Deputy Mayor, yes, we know it's a model that works because we've had it for a couple of years now, and they've had a lot of success moving through some of the more complicated files. So we know it's a model that works, and we know that those are kind of the three areas where we want to invest in some service level enhancements, for sure.
Thank you, councillor Farr. Please continue, Mr. Thorne.
So this is on slide 19 now. So this slide shows the department's net operating budget by division. As you can see, our maintenance budget is forecasting an increase of $2.16 million, represents about a 0.3% impact on the levy, and an 8.6% increase on the department's operating budget. The majority of this increase, about 6.3% of that 8.6, relates to what I call sort of nondiscretionary cost increases, and I'll get to some of those on the next slide. The remaining 2.3% of that 8.6 is primarily focused on addressing the sustainability of our fiscal model that I referred to in one of those earlier slides. And that mostly means taking staff off of reserves and eliminating some of the gapping and vacancies that we've been using to deal with the current fiscal model. So it says 6.3% of that 8.6% increase is nondiscretionary cost increases. By far, the largest portion of that is our salary and benefits. We also have incurred in our parking and bylaw group some increase in property tax costs, credit card charges, as more people are using credit cards to pay for parking, we incur greater credit card fees, so that contributes to part of that. At the time, we were planning our budget estimates in Q3, we were having a bit of a dip in some of our planning revenue, so we put forward, I guess what I call a conservative revenue forecast on our planning fees, which were a reduction of $300,000 over our 214 fees. I can tell you that we did have a good Q4 in 2014, so it looks like we will not experience that dip in 2014. We're still carrying forward that conservative estimate in the 2015 budget of a $300,000 reduction in planning fees. That's 70,000 of that is from zoning application, and just over 220 is from official plan applications. And also reduced capital funding for some of the staff in our Growth Management Division represents the main components of that 6.3%. As I said, the remaining 2.3% is intended to start chipping away at the sustainability of our fiscal model, and that means getting some of the staff off of reserves. So as I'll get to in the next couple of slides, we're looking at reduced staff funding from the Development Fee Stabilization Reserve of just over 300,000, and from the Economic Development Investment Reserve Fund of 90,000. So this is the budget nationals for the Development Fee Stabilization Reserve up to 2015. Members of council will know that this is a reserve that was intended to minimize the impact of fluctuations in development activity. So in good years, we have a lot of development activity, the intent is that we would contribute to this reserve so that in the down years, we weren't having to adjust staffing levels or to deal with decreasing activity. So it's meant to sort of moderate the impacts of the inevitable fluctuations in development activity. As you can see, over the past couple of years, this reserve has been declining fairly steadily, and that's because of increasing draws on the reserve to cover staff expenses. At the current rate of decline, our estimate is that the reserve will be depleted by about 2018. And by shifting staff off the reserve, which we'll talk about in the next couple of slides, our goal is to stabilize the reserve balance at the current level. So prior to 2014, we were drawing off reserve to cover, speaking specifically about the Development Fee Stabilization Reserve now, we were drawing off that reserve, or budgeting off that reserve, about a million dollars to cover staff FTEs primarily in planning and growth management, budgeting for about 12.5 FTEs. Now, in practice, the draws weren't actually this high because we recognized that a million-dollar draw wasn't a sustainable draw in the reserve, so what we actually did was we addressed it through gapping, by not filling some of the FTE vacancies that we had. In 2014, largely because of the fee increase that happened in 2013, we were able to decrease that draw in reserve. That fee increase was about, brought in about a million dollars in revenues. That allowed us, some of that went to offset levy pressures, about 850,000 of that went back into reserve, became a contribution back to reserves that our net draw in order to cover staffing expenses in 2014 is approximately $400,000. So the 2.3% of our net operating budget increase that I spoke about in that previous slide, the goal of that is to reduce our FTE draw on the Building Fee Stabilization Reserve down to $100,000. That represents one FTE funded off the reserve in 2015. So we aren't looking to eliminate that entirely in 2015, although ultimately that is our goal by 2016, we can completely remove staff funding off of the Development Fee Stabilization Reserve. Now, department-wide, we do have other reserves as well. So prior to 2014, off all of the PED reserves, we were carrying about 17.5 staff, that includes the 12.5 off Development Fee Stabilization. We also had some staff funding off the Parking Reserve, Tax Stabilization Reserve, the Industrial Park Reserve, and the Economic Development Reserve. So again, part of that 2.3% in the net operating budget is designed to reduce those staffing pressures on reserves as well. So as I said on the earlier slide, we're looking, we're budgeting 90,000 to remove an FTE from the ECTAV Reserve, and as well to remove an FTE from the Parking Reserve. So again, our goal is to reduce that, it doesn't entirely eliminate the staffing funded off reserve in 2015. We'd be looking to further reduce that in 2016. Ultimately, the long-term goal is to have the long-term goal is to have a sustainable model that doesn't rely on reserve funding for staff. So I said, although we were budgeting for $1 million prior to 2014, a $1 million draw in reserve to cover staffing, we knew that wasn't sustainable. So that's been, we've been dealing that by gapping. So particularly in planning and growth management, in 2014, on average, we were carrying about 27 vacancies, 20 of those in planning and seven of those in growth management. This obviously negatively affects our approval timelines, our processing timelines, and it contributes to very significant workload pressures on staff. So to give you some example of that, in 2014, the number of active files sitting on a planner's desk at any point in time was about 32. For some staff, that was more than 40. I can tell you, just my experience in other places, best practice is shooting for around 10 to 15 active files as a manageable workload. At 32 or in some cases 40, basically what we're saying is that planners have in a given week, they can give an hour to each of the files that are on their desks. By taking those staff off reserve and providing a levy funding source for those staff, the goal is to have those vacancies filled, get us down to zero gapping vacancies in both planning and growth management. On the planning side, that brings us down to about 20 files per planner. So a much more sustainable and reasonable workload on our planning staff and approval staff. And one of the key things, and this certainly comes up in the work that Ian Neville's been doing through his interviews, that's one of the key things that's driving some of the timeline issues that we're facing on our approvals, is just the workloads and number of files that each staff person's responsible for. That's on planning. On the growth management side, our coordinators are dealing with about 46 applications at any given time for site plan, for zoning, for planning condominium, and for formal consultation. Again, by eliminating gapping and fully funding the FTEs that we already have in place, we can reduce that down to about 25, or sorry, we can reduce that down to 40. And our PMs and SPMs are carrying about 25 applications at any given time for major zoning applications, for draft plans, for subdivision engineering approvals. That's files. Some of these actually result in five, six, seven different rounds of engineering drawings and submissions that they're actually dealing with. And again, by eliminating the gapping, our goal is to get that down to about 13 active files per individual. So this really becomes the key reason why that reliance on reserve funding is problematic in the department, particularly in planning and growth management, is because it's not sustainable. We have to gap, we have to carry a number of vacancies in order to balance our budgets, and it just results in increased workloads on the staff that we do have.
If I could go through it quicker, I can come back to the line by line if we want.
Just before you move on, I don't have any speakers on the list, but I do have a couple of questions. If I could ask Councilor Partridge to take the chair.
Yes, go ahead, please.
So I understand the concept certainly of trying to get more out of the organization, filling those positions certainly makes sense. However, we do have a historical gapping average that we've used, and I'm not certain if it's still included in the corporate financials or not, but does the strive to fill all the positions then have a corporate implication on our gapping numbers, which were in the, guessing now, $5 million range or $4 million range?
Who would like to answer that?
So through the chair, in my presentation immediately following planning, I'll provide an update with respect to the gapping. Councilor Collins is correct, we've increased it to, I believe it's somewhere in the 4.6, but I have that number in the next presentation. I believe what Jason's identified to committee's attention is that planning in the past, in an effort to manage their reserve balances, have maintained vacancies so not to draw on those reserves. So less of a budgeting issue, more of a maintaining the reserve balances. Rather than being limited by the reserpetite processes around development processes, rather than being limited by reserve balances that are not sustainable going forward, is to reduce that reliance from reserve and transfer that onto the levy. If I could ask Jason, just to go back to that reserve slide, I can try to demonstrate it just in that forecast. If you look at that on the development fee stabilization reserve, the third line down, transfer surplus deficit to reserves, you'll see each and every year, there's a negative number, and that reflects a draw from reserves. With the exception of 2013, there was actual transfer to reserves. So that is concerning in the fact that that reserve does not have a dedicated funding source, which creates that challenge. You can see that trend from $2.2 million year-end balance in 2009 to a forecast for 2015 of 1.1. Given that that reserve does not have a dedicated source of funding, staff are trying to maintain a positive reserve balance by maintaining those vacancies. And again, that's not sustainable given some of the workload challenges. So again, that is what is before committee today, is the option to reduce the reliance on reserve and to transfer that funding onto the levy in an effort to try to manage workload and the timeliness of processing the development applications and planning work as well.
Jason, do you want to expand on that at all?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, maybe just to add that, yeah, one of the issues here is, as Mike was describing, we have sort of a structural gapping that's actually built into the financial model of the department is that certain positions just cannot be filled in order to maintain those reserve balances. So I would anticipate in the hirings and staff movements that happen over the course of the year, you'd still have some vacancies that are being carried from time to time. What we're trying to get rid of here is the actual structural vacancy issue where we're relying on that as a budgeting tool.
Thanks. So just to be clear through you, Madam Chairman, then, the positions that are referenced there that are to be filled would have had a funding source of reserve, so there is no corporate hit in that context?
So through the chair, to Councilor Collins's original question in terms of the corporate gapping figure is, these positions would not have impacted the corporate gapping figure. What would have, the effect of those vacancies would have been to try to manage the year-end balance in those reserves. So where there were vacancies, they were maintained to try to maintain a positive balance in that reserve.
Counselor?
So if I'm looking at, you know, we've always tried to live with the concept of development pays for itself, then we're now transferring positions to the levy. How are we dealing with that issue? Because I think if I was to look back at some of the positions that have been added to the department, it would have preceded your time, Jason, through you, Madam Chairman. Staff would have come forward at some point in time and said, "Look, we're adding these positions to the organization. They're not levy-funded, so council, just be assured, we have a funding source for it, and now we're making that transfer or that jump to the levy." Are we looking at the historical context of some of the positions? I mean, 27 is a lot, and we're all committed to certainly improving the service to the development community. But this is more of an internal finance issue than anything else in terms of, you know, now what happens to the complement if in fact they're built into the levy. Where's the discretion in future years when those building permits drop and development applications drop and activity drops? Do you still have the same flexibility when those positions are built into the levy to say, you know, we need five less planners and three less building department staff and, you know, the domino effect goes on? Can you help me with that, Jason, in terms of what happens in the future now that we're making this shift?
Yes, through the Deputy Mayor. I mean, in terms of dealing with those highs and lows in the development cycle, I mean, the intent of keeping a stable balance in development reserve is to deal with exactly that. So I would anticipate that in the future, if there were down years, we would be going back to the reserve to draw upon it, which is what the reserve was established for. And in the good years, we'd be making net contributions to it. So it's really utilizing that reserve in a way that I think a stabilization reserve was meant to be utilized as opposed to relying upon it for core funding for staff. You know, to the broader issue of sort of historically how those positions were brought forward, you know, I can't speak to that. My understanding is that they were targeted as sort of reserve and fee-funded positions. And the fees do cover, on the planning side, the planners are covered about 75% of their, time is covered by fees, and then 25% is subsidized by the levy. So, you know, there was that decision made at the time that the fees were adopted, that there would be a certain portion of direct cost recovery, but there'd be a certain portion that would be funded off the levy to maintain that service just for the benefit it brings to the broader city.
But how do those percentages change? We're still within those percentages when you start to transfer these positions out of the reserve and onto the levy?
Yes. So through Deputy Mayor, we continue to maintain those same ratios. So on planning, it's generally 75% fee-funded, 25% levy-funded. The decision was made when those planning fees were adopted for a reduced fee recovery for some of the rural applications, agricultural applications, I believe it's a third fee-funded, and the rest is levy-funded. So that would be unchanged, that fee model would be unchanged.
Those are the questions I have right now, Madam Chairman, and I...
Councilor Ferguson, add him on, thank you.
Council Ferguson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Jason, I just get disappointed in what I'm seeing here because, you know, as Councilor Collins said, it's always been understood that the levy should not pay for development. And the part that probably puzzles me the most is two years ago, planning and economic development staff came to the planning committee asking for a 50% increase in fees, zoning from 5 to 10, official plan amendments 10 to 20, a significant increase in licensing to the tune of 50% again. That got significant pushback at the committee. Why are you doing this to our investors? Because it has to fund itself and we're too far behind. Here we are two years later, and now you want to dump it off on the levy. So a 50% increase was not enough, and now you want to shove it up another 8% on the levy? This is going to be a tough sell. And I just don't get it, why these radical increases aren't working. You know, it's that old saying, you throw, throwing money at this problem is not solving it. So can you please explain that to me?
Yes, through the Deputy Mayor, I think that 2013 increase, it did have a dramatic effect on the reserve balance, as I showed on the earlier slides. Prior to that, we were relying on about $1 million budgeted off reserve for staff. In 2014, that went down to, it went down to $300,000, $400,000 with one position added to the reserve funding. So that did have a significant impact in terms of the rate at which the reserve was being drawn down. But those fees were always intended to not cover 100% of the cost of the approvals work. They're covering 75% of our planner's time. The levy does have to keep up with that other 25% of the time taken to deal with approvals and 2/3 of the cost on some of, on the rural and agricultural applications. So there is, there always has been a levy component to that staff time. And that 2013 fee increase did make a significant improvement in terms of the stability of that reserve.
No, it didn't, because in 2012, you had 1.3, now you got 1.2. With a 50% increase in fees. And I'm not sure where this money's being spent. And, you know, do we have too much staff, I guess, is just what jumps off the page out of it, because I would suspect most of your costs are salaries and wages. And I just need more explanation on this. 50% increase in the fees, that has to cover 75%. You say it's still covering 75%, but now you want another 8% increase on the levy. For that other 25%, why are we seeing a significant reduction in the number of applications? Because if you do, we don't need all these building inspectors that we hired on emergency basis because of all the growth we had, was all going to self-fund. And do we need all these planners that you needed to process these applications if your revenues dropped off so much? So I'm really having trouble getting my head around this. We just keep throwing more money at this problem, and it just keeps getting worse. And that's not acceptable, in my view. So I think we're going to have to have some more discussion on this.
No further speakers. Questions? Councilor Murillo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Jason, on that point, I think the reason why I was emphasizing the streamlining and the importance of separating the large applications versus the smaller ones is to have a tangible or measurable result from this investment. So through you, Mr. Chairman, I think what Councilor Ferguson is saying is incredibly accurate in that we have been told this in the past, and to not see any measurable, tangible result becomes unsustainable. So what makes this different now in that if we need all of these additional resources, are we going to see a measurable outcome from it? And I think we had this discussion when we met, and you said that it wasn't really going to be tangible, but it would be measurable. Perhaps you can expand upon the measurable aspect?
Sure, through Mr. Mayor, the measurable aspect, I think one of the key measures we're going to be putting on ourselves is to establish approval benchmarks for approval timelines and then, and then reporting on those. And like I said, I think one of the key goals that I hear from the development community is, you know, as fast as possible, but also as predictable as possible, so they know what sort of timelines they can expect. So that's going to be one of our key deliverables that we're setting for the department, frankly, with or without this investment. That's something that we have to do. So the investment can affect sort of what those timelines are, but regardless, we need to be able to establish those. I know the question sort of came out about, do we have too many planners? And I can tell you, that's one of the questions that I asked as well. And I looked, you know, just informally talking to some of my colleagues in other municipalities. So our planning department's sitting at about 70 FTEs, of which 50 are filled. And I did look at some other municipalities. I frankly think 70 is probably a reasonable number. It seems to be in the ballpark of what other municipalities carry that have similar development activity. Our issue is that we actually only have 50 people in those 70 roles. So I know, for example, you know, Mississauga is one example, sort of the, has more or less the same building permit construction value that we have in Hamilton. So it's sort of a good comparator. They set about 90 in their planning department. So in terms of actually filled vacancies, we're just over half what they have in Mississauga. And that is a, I mean, that's a two-tier municipality as well. So some of the long-range planning function actually happens at the upper-tier level. So I guess the short answer to that question is I don't think we have necessarily too many FTEs. I think 70 is probably about the right number for a city of this size or for the development activity we're doing. The problem is we've only got 50 bodies sitting in those 70 seats.
And on the FTE question, what occurs is, when we give out that position, that's a job for life, because we never seem to remove the FTEs. We're always adding to the FTEs. So again, to expand upon what Councilor Ferguson said, hypothetically speaking, if we're not breaking this billion-dollar mark year after year after year, we're not going to be terminating those people or laying those people off. We're stuck with them. So how do we rationalize that? And is there a plan to have the necessary resources implemented without the perpetual commitment? Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, through the Deputy Mayor, I think you're right. And I think, you know, where those fluctuations are short-term, that's what the reserve is intended for. If we get to the point, and I certainly hope we don't, where we actually, you know, structurally are no longer a billion-dollar-a-year municipality, we're something much less than that, then yeah, that becomes a question that's something we bring to council in terms of whether or not, you know, we need to be maintaining the same staffing levels. I frankly don't anticipate that we're going to be, you know, I personally think of a billion dollars as our starting line, and that we want to grow beyond that. So that's really what I've got my eye to. I think inevitably there will be fluctuations, and that's why we've got the reserve to get us through those. If I'm wrong, if we go back to being a $500 million-a-year municipality, then we would have, yeah, at that point, we'd have to look at what those staffing levels are.
Okay. Now, not just that particular department, but when we look at all other departments where we don't have that number with respect to financial measurables, and nobody wants to go below a billion, but in the event that we do, we are stuck with those FTEs, correct?
Well, through the Deputy Mayor, I mean, yeah, I mean, there's essentially, yes. And that, I mean, if the development activity in the city drops off significantly and the revenue generation drops off, then that's an issue that goes, I think, well beyond our department.
Okay. So I guess, and we have to look at this in the future in hindsight and measure, but I guess from our perspective, we need assurances that this decision is something that will be continually measured to determine whether or not it can be justified and rationalized. Because we're going to the general levy, when I don't think there was ever a commitment to do so, at a time when we can least afford it, becomes problematic. And although I'm going to be supporting this, because I believe that there will be a tangible benefit, I'm cautiously supporting it, recognizing that it can't be afforded, but we might not be able to afford not to invest in it. And that's really the crux of my support. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, if I get this straight, the billion dollars, as you just stated, is the starting line, which is great to hear from our general manager, planning and economic development. We grow from there. To accommodate that growth, we accommodate those making the multimillion-dollar private investments, large or small investments in our community. To accommodate that, we accommodate you with 2.1-something million dollars of an enhancement in your budget.
Deputy Mayor, can you clarify the question?
A billion's just the start.
Yes.
We are growing from an economic development perspective. We can't with half of what Mississauga has as a comparator, a good comparator that you referenced, with 50 planners, when 70 is where we should be at. It's difficult enough now to keep up. So in order to get to 70 to keep up, and therefore accommodate with these enhancements, our business of having a sound and efficient our business of having a sound and efficient planning process for those investing out there, their private multi-millions of dollars, this is what's necessary, through you.
Through the Deputy Mayor, that's correct. I don't leave the impression that it's only this either. I mean, we're here talking about budget today, because it's Budget Day, but there are other pieces in the 2015 work plan around the processes that we're using, the training and capacity of staff, the technology that we're using. So there's a number of things that have to come together for us to look at that billion dollars as a starting point. This is one significant piece of the puzzle, but by no means are we focused just on resourcing.
Chris wanted to say something. Chris?
Just if I can, through you, Chairman, just, you know, obviously, there's going to be another day where we're going to get into the specifics around the enhancements. And I think the questions that you're raising, you know, as I sit here, I've got staff kind of peppering me on both sides with answers as to the, you know, why it is that we need to go in the direction that we're going here. So I think, you know, we certainly hear, and we expect it, there would be some concerns anytime we add FTEs, we don't take that very lightly. So we will come back with a, you know, a fulsome explanation, and certainly, you know, in the meantime, in meeting with members of council here that want to meet with us and give us their specific concerns, that would be very helpful. I'll just leave you with this other thing, is that I know, not just the individuals that are sitting beside me here, but, and then behind me, there are others that are probably listening in right now. We know that we have a number of people in the next three to five years that are going to be retiring. And so, you know, do you always have to replace one for one? I mean, not always. I mean, at the end of the day, you know, it's not a bad idea to have people in the organization that are able to meet our demands, but as over time, and we see things ebb and flow, I mean, we do have an opportunity to kind of make some decisions as to whether or not we replace everyone that walks out the door. So, you know, attrition is, you know, is something that's not unique to us. You know, everyone is dealing with these kinds of circumstances. So I hear you loud and clear in terms of, you know, if we approve an FTE in that base, we're stuck with it forever and a day. I don't think that's the case. But I think, I just want to make sure that all the concerns and questions that are coming from members of council right now, we're clear on what they are, so that when we come back and give you a fulsome answer as to why it is that we're recommending what it is, you'll have it. The other thing, too, is that, you know, I've said this many times before, we're seeing a once-in-a-generation situation unfold here in Hamilton, where the market is heating up. And that is why Jason and the rest of us are very concerned that we're going to be able to provide the service that this development community is expecting. And so, you know, at the end of the day, FTEs or staffing is going to be important. And so that's kind of why we're suggesting it should be considered a priority. But we will make certain, and I know you'll hold us to it, that's your job, that, you know, every FTE that we think is warranted, there is ample justification.
Counsel Farr.
Kind of heard in there, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And certainly, I'm glad Chris made the point, because he's talked to this point for some years now about an aging workforce here in the city of Hamilton. And I don't know if Jay has those demographics as it relates to his division or department, but, or departments, but attrition could very well help us in the event that, although our General Manager doesn't feel, he thinks we're just getting rolling on these billion-dollar years, and it's just going to go up from there. But if in the event, the market here at home or globally starts cooling off, and we don't see the kind of action we're seeing now, which is, as Chris says, quote, "once in a generation," end quote, we may find that the two will work with one another in that attrition versus a cooling-off period. We may find that we don't have to, unfortunately, make hypothetically, in the future, some cuts to the organization. I think that's what I heard. Thanks.
Do I have myself, and then Counsel Ferguson, and if I could hand the chair over to...
Absolutely, go ahead, please.
Counsel Partridge. Jason, I'm trying to understand the 27 positions, so they're in the organization within the hierarchy. I asked earlier whether they are included in the gapping, and they're not included in corporate gapping, because in the past, they would have been earmarked as a burden on the reserve. But when I look at the budget that's for 2015, and the pressures associated with it, I don't see, and I may have read it wrong, but I don't see 27 positions worth of funding, new funding, on the levy. How does that work on a go-forward basis?
Jason?
The 20 planners and the seven engineers?
Yeah. For the 2014 draw towards those 27 planners was the $400,000. So that is what the pressure is. That's where that, the component of that 2.3% increment above and beyond, what I said, was sort of the non-discretionary component of the operating budget increase. So that deals with our getting all the staff, all of the planning staff off the reserve.
Which is only 300, just to be clear. That's 300 less out of the reserve?
Correct.
Certainly doesn't come close to paying for 20 planners.
Right.
Their revenue source, then, that is recovered for the rest of their salaries?
Yes. So the other revenue sources, we have three of those FTEs, we'll talk about in enhancement time, which again are approved FTEs that don't have a funding source. So those will be, that's in our long-range planning groups, we'll be talking about those as funding enhancements. They don't show up as additional FTEs, but they show up as funding enhancements for those FTEs. There are, again, on the planning side, there are a number that are capital-funded as well. And I'm trying to think what the remaining ones are. I can look to Steve if you can speak to the last couple. So in terms of the 20 FTEs in planning, we've got three that were the long-range planning that we'll be talking about come enhancement. We've got $300,000 that are taking some off the reserve. And there was capital funding for some, I'm trying to remember what the remaining FTEs were.
Through you, to the committee, in terms of the current vacancies, where, how they reside, right now, I believe there's... I'm looking at where, how they're funded. If they're filled, then, through you, Madam Chairman, Steve, if those 20 positions are filled, I was trying to understand where the budget pressures come into play to fund the positions.
So out of the current complement of vacancies within the planning division, I believe nine vacancies reside within the long-range planning group, working either on terms of the official plan, provincial plan review, or the zoning bylaw. The balance of the vacancies within the planning division actually reside within the development group and/or the business facilitation group, I think. Because the funding source, they're starting to get into a third of an FTE in terms of the way it gets reported, but primarily, it would fall within the development, planning, heritage, and design group, because business facilitation, the development planners, they all reside within that one section. And that's where the reserve-funding positions that are currently vacant or and/or currently funded reside in.
So that's where they are in the organization, but once they're filled, you need a funding source for their salaries. Where does that come from? The long-range planning, is that capital-funded, then, through capital accounts?
That is correct, that is correct, Madam Chairman. The intent is, within terms of moving the staff off of the reserve that are funded in both, in the development group, and it would only be those staff that would then be going from the reserve-funded onto the levy-funded. The long-range planning group, there's an enhancement request to be discussed at a future point in time. Those staff are currently funded through the capital projects that they work on, i.e. the zoning bylaw or the provincial plan review. So they're not being transferred from the, they will remain as capital-funded position. The positions that are being added from reserve to the levy are the staff in the development planning group. And we do manage those staff against the revenues that are coming in, so we monitor revenues on a monthly basis. And rather than the development fees going into the reserve on Monday and coming out on Friday to pay them, we're saying, let's just skip that intermediate step, and that they will be funded from the levy, and any surplus revenues that come into development planning will go to the reserve. And that reserve is also, Tony and I both share the reserve, and his staff are 100% reserve-funded, but the development planners would be funded from the levy, and we will still continue to collect the same amount of net revenue. In terms of our revenue projections, we use a three-year rolling average. At the time this information was presented, we were looking at a bit of a dip in 2014, but the year-end 2014 numbers were fully on target, and we anticipate that, based on the updated numbers, that 2015 will be an equal year in terms of activity levels from the last three or four years.
Counselor?
So those that are funded from capital, you have sufficient funds, then, on a go-forward basis, or do you need new capital funding submissions to fund those year after year?
Through you, Madam Chairman, depending on, yes, they would need to be funded on an annualized basis. Depending on the capital projects, some of them are multi-year approved, such as the zoning, provincial plan review, the zoning bylaw, which may carry into 2016. But then that would be each year, we would make a capital budget submission for those additional projects. If we're not successful in getting that capital funding, then we would have to look at sort of a resource management strategy, what to do with those staff. Very often, if we know the project is either winding down, or that we won't be continuing on with that project, that's when we would start to look at gapping, and how can we redeploy those staff into other positions within the organization. So for example, when the official plans got wrapped up, those staff then started to look at other opportunities within the organization, and applied for, and went through the competition process to secure employment elsewhere within the organization. Those capital-funded positions were then held vacant until we received additional capital funding dollars to fill those positions and move forward with, on those projects.
Okay.
Counselor?
Those are the questions I have right now.
Chair, back to you.
And Counsel Ferguson, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris, do you recall how many new FTEs are being proposed in the budget that SMT has before us globally?
I have, God.
I think it was 130, wasn't it?
I think it's 130. Yeah, I think, though, through the chairman here, the, we realize that's a huge number, and, but you'll notice that in terms of what's been presented in the budget as what SMT recommends, it's a far lesser number than that. I think 19, Mike? What's the, what's the number of FTEs that SMT is recommending council approve?
So through the chair, there are, as it relates to the tax-supported budgets, there are a total of 51 that are reflected in enhancements, as Chris has identified. In terms of SMT's recommendation, I believe that 30 are the economic growth-related FTEs. Just short of 20 are fully funded FTEs that have no net levy impact, and one FTE is legislated. There are an additional 55, just short of 56, FTEs that committee will be considering through additional enhancements at future committee meetings. And with respect to the, just short of 34 FTEs that relate to capital projects, those were parked during the capital budget deliberations and referred to the operating budget process. The final variable is the, just short of seven FTEs that were also parked during the rate-budget process. So those were the four categories of FTEs that were put forward, or have been put forward as part of the 15 budget process. And again, for the most part, they will continue to be deliberated through the operating budget process.
Okay. So I mean, I did a mental total on that, it was around 130 originally proposed?
Yeah.
Was transit, yes?
So through the chair, close to 140 FTEs that, and that includes both tax and rate. Out of that, 147 are rate, and out of the 133 that are tax-related, staff are recommending that 30 of those FTEs would support the priority around economic growth and jobs prosperity.
Okay. Because through you to Chris, Chris, when I hear you say that you take any enhancements of any FTEs very seriously, my first reaction to that was, really? 130 or 140, if you include transit now here, that there's a number of them parked, once it got to this chamber? And I think the net number now, you're saying that with, net happens to be parked, are just 30, Mike?
So through the chair, council, in fact, has not made any decisions with respect to FTE enhancements. The rate enhancements were funded under the rate increase, but were parked. They were not approved, the seven. The operating impacts and the FTE related to capital, there were about 34 FTEs. Those were parked and referred to the operating budget process. So those will come back to committee during the operating budget process. There are a total of about 51 FTEs that are being put forward in terms of, they are either fully funded, about 20 of those 51 FTEs are fully funded, no net levy impact. One is legislated, and about 30 FTEs are being put forward as recommended by staff as they support again economic growth.
And are the 21 that are covered, building department staff that are covered through perm fees, and planning staff that are covered through fees?
So through the Deputy Mayor, the fully funded are a cross-representation across the departments and have various funding sources, from fees, from senior levels of government. So there's a mix of potential funding sources for the 19.75 that are fully funded, no net levy impact. And they are contained in your budget book documents.
Because I can say, Mr. Chairman, when I saw that 130, 140 number, it took my attention, and what the heck, you know, there's, somebody's not taking the FTE seriously when you see that big a number. And so we hear there, none of it approved yet, including the rate budget, which has already been approved. I guess my next question, through you, Mr. Chairman, to Jason, on page 21, back to that slide. So you had $1.7 million in the balance in 2010 and 2011. It dropped down to $1.3 million in 2012. And then the planning department, the economic development department, came to planning committee and says, we need a 50% jump in all fees, 100% jump in official plan amendments and in rezoning. And that was hard to swallow, but as a result of that, it jumped to 1.9. And then, with the same number of building permits issued, in fact, maybe a little, little less, and with that 50% increase in fees still in place, you drop down to 1.2. So I think Chris is on to something. I need more information on that. What was your total revenue? What was your total cost? And what's gone out of line? Is it the revenue side? Is it the cost side? So we can get our head around that. Because to see that happen after we took it on the, I mean, the Home Builders Association wasn't happy about those increase in fees. And politically, we took a hit over that. But it didn't help. You're right back to where you were before we shoved the fees up by 50%. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm not prepared to receive this report today until I get that additional information. I'll pose any motion to receive, because I just need more information to get comfortable with this before we move forward. Thanks.
Stephanie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's actually no report before you today, it's just...
Okay, I don't want to receive this report today, then, at this presentation today, until we get more information about why was such a spike in fees not resulting in more revenue or sustained revenue in the reserve funds, so that growth pays for planning and for building? Thank you.
Counsel Person. Thank you. Counsel Brenda Johnson.
Yeah, thank you. And now I can get back to my question, that was a great segue into it. When we were just going through the health department, it broke down each department, salaries, cost allowances, everything to the reserves. It even talked about recovery and fees. This is something that I don't see here as well. So that was my, my big question was, how much for the fees for the growth management? How much for the fees for the bylaw, et cetera? So if there's any way we can get the same, and I think I've said this to Mr. Murray since four years ago, can we not have all the presentations, all the charts, and they mimic each other, so you're comparing apples to apples, oranges to oranges? Everybody has office equipment, everybody has staffing, everybody has all these expenses, and you could almost just copy and paste what your expenses are per department. And I don't see this again. So it's really frustrating to look at one presentation and then see another one that doesn't include it. And it was very helpful, looking at the public health, which department and what the costs are, and the employee costs, the office cost. So it would be really helpful if we could do that here as well, as well as all the other departments. I'm not just picking on this one. If everybody did the same thing, it would be very helpful, and I think you would have had your answers too, Mr. Thorne. So those were my comments, more than, thank you for the segue.
Thank you, Counsel Johnson. Please continue, Mr. Thorne.
Actually, most of what's on the remaining slides is sort of just breaking down that previous information by division, so some of it will already have been spoken to, but I will quickly hit some of the highlights. So in growth management, we're looking, I mean, the percentage increase looks very significant here, because it's actually putting funding on the levy, which wasn't there before. The primary pressure here is the removal of staff from capital and reserve funding. That's about 312,000 off reserve and 210 off capital. And then the employer-related expenses are also a major driver. And we have calculated some increases in some of our fees, the subdivision processing fees and sewer and water permits. We've offset some of the employee costs with some increases in those fees. Looking at planning, again, the, most of the levy increase is due to annual employer-related expenses. As well, I mentioned earlier, the, that we, at the time we did the budgeting, we were forecasting... I mentioned earlier the, that we, at the time we did the budgeting, we were forecasting a reduction of $300,000 in the planning fees. That does affect the reserve balance as well that you saw earlier. So this reflects a drop off of $300,000 of 2015 over 2014. Given what we saw in Q4 of 2014, the expectation is maybe those, those fees won't drop off. We're still carrying them in the budget for now. And that's what is, is, is driving the, most of the levy increase here. In building services, we see a fairly small increase, 65,000. This is all employee related costs. It shows us a higher percentage because most of the, the staff is actually not funded off the levy. So it looks like a higher percentage at 7,000, but in dollar figures, it's just over 65,000. Economic development, again, most of the increase here is employee related expenses. We do have also in economic development, taking one staff person off of reserve funding, off the economic development reserve funding, and that's being put forward as a funded enhancement for, for business development officer. Parking and bylaw services, again, the major driver is salary and benefit increases. That contributes about 434,000 to that bottom line of, of just under 600. I spoke earlier about some increases in credit card charges as more people are using credit cards at our, at our parking machines, as well as property tax increases that impact the property taxes paid on our parking lots. We are also budgeting an increase in the amount that's transferred into the parking reserve of $25,000 beyond what was done in the past, and that's to sustain the, the parking system capital program. Again, tourism culture is entirely employee related increases. There's also a, a pressure of about $20,000 that is attributed to the maintenance costs at, at Balfour, which is, which is now being incurred by, by the city. Previously, it was incurred by the, the occupant of the, of the home. And then in the GM's office, again, the, its employee related expenses are the, the cost driver for the 0.6% increase in the, the GM office budget.
Thank you, Mr. Thorne. Counsel Farr?
Can you please through, just the one question on the credit cards, so can you explain that a little more fully to me? We're taking a hit because more people are using credit cards. It was the service fees that are, so, so the parking revenue doesn't match the, the credit card service fee through you?
Can I refer that one to Marty?
So, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have increased credit card usage for parking, credit cards in our parking garages, buying licenses across the counter, dog licensing and paying parking tickets online. Whenever people use a credit card, there's additional charge to us.
So to remedy that through you to Marty?
So, sir, Mr. Chairman, that's part of our focus in trying to make it easier for people to pay and convenience factor that we have to, we have to absorb into our budget.
So we make it easier, but we take the hit by making it easier is what I'm hearing through you.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, that's correct. We have a fee every time somebody uses a credit card.
Counsel Farr?
And my goal was to get Ferguson to chime in, and he has done so, so I'm through.
You're done? Okay. Counsel Ferguson, please.
Through you to Marty. Marty, about two years ago, when we're looking at the city hall parking lot to convert it to a credit card, you said in your report then that credit card revenues are significantly higher than coins because people will buy more than they really need when they use a credit card. But now you're saying credit cards cost us more because of the fee. And the fees in the order 2%, but aren't people spending, putting in, buying far more than 2% of the time they really need? And therefore, total revenues will go up as a result of that?
So, sir, Mr. Chairman, we're not talking about street paying display machines. None of our machines on the streets have credit card capability. We're talking about our parking structures and our cross the counter and online activities.
But you don't find that people buy more time than need? Or you're saying the parking structures only pay when they leave? So they're charged for the exact amount they're used?
Sir, Mr. Chairman, we don't have credit card machines on our streets now, so we don't know if they're buying more than they need. Apparently, that is the experience in other municipalities. We're not finding the same thing here in terms of cash payments. In fact, some places where we've put in those machines, the, the cost, the revenues have gone down. So we're struggling with trying to figure out why we're different than some other municipalities. And one thing we know is that the rates, the parking rates in Hamilton are very low. So people may not want to use credit cards for a small amount of a parking charge.
I know when people have to attend in here, Mr. Chairman, to all day planning committee meetings, they'd love to be able to use credit cards because you run out of loonies and toonies. And, and there's a great revenue opportunity there, although maybe your ticket sales would go, revenue would go way down because people are paying for the service rather than running out of coins and getting a ticket.
So, sir, Mr. Chairman, we are still struggling with the city hall lot, and it's our, on our work plan to reinvestigate this year. And we think credit card capability machines may be the way to go at city hall because of some of the long meetings here.
Okay. I still, I touched puzzles, maybe I'll talk to you offline, Marty. Why with credit card payments, is your, is it actually a cost rather than a revenue because people buy more than what they need? I remember seeing the numbers in Burlington, it was significant jump that they had because people were paying and buying more time than they needed when they could put it on a credit card.
So, sir, Mr. Chairman, again, I think we're talking mostly about license fees, dog licenses. We're not really talking about parking fees for increased credit card charge. Although that's some of it, that's not the big piece.
Thank you, Counsel Ferguson. Counsel Farr?
Just as a follow up, a lot of our fees now are being, more and more are being paid online. So through you, is that still, we're still taking a hit from online fee payments?
Sir, Mr. Chairman, yes, there's a convenience fee when you pay a parking ticket, for instance, online.
Say that again, Marty, I missed it.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, when you pay a parking ticket, for instance, online, there's a, there's a credit card charge and a convenience fee that you would pay?
Yet, yet, yet we continue to try to promote more and more of the online as a service to the, to the community as a convenience.
Counsel Collins?
Through you to Jason. I'm just trying to understand the corporate variance for 214. Do we have what that was last calendar year?
Did you say corporate or department?
Departmental, sorry, yeah.
On slide 19, if you look at the 2014 restated budget and 2014 projected actual, is that what you're looking for?
Yes. About a 600,000, okay.
Thank you, Counsel Collins. No further questions. So, Mr. Thorne, is that the end of your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to clarify something here. So this is just a presentation. Counsel Ferguson had some concerns of accepting the presentation. Nothing is etched in stone, no FTEs are etched in stone. It'll be coming back to, to committee, to GIC committee and through the budget, rest of the budget. Is that, that's correct?
No, it's not.
Okay, so I see nods of heads, so, all right. So Counsel Farr? Second by Counsel Conley, all in favor? Counsel Ferguson?
Just a follow up question through you to Chris. Chris, you said you got our, you got our message and that you want to come back with more information. Then why would we receive this presentation until it's complete with this new information?
So I guess the other opportunity is to, I guess, table it, if that's.
That sounds nicer.
But I mean, if that, either way, we're going to, Mike's got his hand up, so maybe I'll stop before. I go into, Mike?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Just to remind committee members in terms of our process and our dates going forward, the objective for the departmental presentations is to provide some context to the preliminary numbers. We continue, staff are continuing to meet on these preliminary numbers. So we will be coming back. I believe our next date is the 27th of February. And starting from the 27th, we will be focused on just general GIC discussion. So we will come back with any updates, and we have updates in terms of these preliminary numbers. So there will be additional information that will be presented. So by receiving this presentation, you're not limiting committee's ability to receive additional information and additional updates from staff as to what has transpired since December, which is when this information was put together. I'll just remind committee, when Public Works presented, they presented updated information with respect to the fuel numbers. So again, you're, you'll continue to receive updates, you'll continue to receive additional information throughout this budget process. It does not limit your ability to receive amendments to the preliminary budget or to influence the budget going forward.
My only concern though, through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mike, is you're a lot smarter with these numbers than I am. And, and if we simply receive like we have the other ones, it starts down a process then, where you'll come back with a macro look at it and where if we have very specific questions like we had today, I'm not sure they're, they're captured and, and result in coming back to us the same way with, to receiving it because then it comes back as a, as a big picture macro number. And, and so if we simply table it until we get, why did fees go up by 50% but revenue's gone down? And, and let us understand that better because I think most of us do not want growth to be paid for by the levy, you know? And, and so that's very specific information we're looking for. So why wouldn't we get a presentation back just on that issue before we go into the big picture numbers?
So through the deputy mayor, if the concern of committee is on receiving this information through subsequent committee dates and meetings, we are tracking that information and we will be bringing that information back. By either receiving this presentation or tabling it, it doesn't necessarily achieve your objective in terms of getting that information back. You've directed us to, to, to report back with additional information in terms of the reserves and the complement that are funded from reserves, and we will do that. And again, as I mentioned, we have dates set aside at the end of this month into next month to start presenting that additional information that may come out of this meeting or any additional meetings continuing on later today and into Friday as well when community emergency services present as does corporate services and CMO. So my point being, we are tracking this information and we will be bringing back the information that you've requested around the reliance on reserves and the transfer to levy funding as well as the complement numbers.
Okay, I, you know, if Mike says he's going to do that, I absolutely trust he's going to do that. So I'm okay now with receiving it.
Okay, so, all right, so on the presentation, it was moved by Counsel Farr and second by Counsel Conley, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, we're on to 7.3 corporate financials. Mike Zagerk will provide the presentation respecting the corporate financials.
the benefit of new counselors, the, my presentation this half is going to focus on non-departmental budgets. So this will include boards and agencies, a bit of a recap from the information that you would have received through boards and agencies, as well as corporate financials and non-program revenues. So the non-program revenues, you'll recall are, for instance, supplementary taxes, POA revenue. So again, so these are both expenditures and revenues that do not necessarily represent a, a department or program area. With respect to boards and agencies, we had a number of presentations from the boards and agencies. And the only number here that is different from what was presented to committee during boards and agencies is the Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority number. You may recall that there was some discussion around the change in the allocation of the funding between the participating municipalities. The city did not accept the position of the MPCA. The Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority board are still deliberating on the budget. I believe the date that they've indicated to us that they hope to have a decision on their budget is February 19th. At that time, we would come back to committee with additional information as to what was approved by the board. And I believe there was some discussion with respect to potential next steps. And we have some options, including appealing the allocation through the Ministry of Natural Resources. And so that, that continues to be an outstanding item.
Mike, just a moment. Counsel Johnson, Brenda Johnson?
Thank you. And just on that point, please, Mike, you said that council took the position that they were not going to accept. Did we actually formally take a position or do we need to do that?
So through the deputy mayor, my suggestion to committee is to wait until the February 19th decision of the MPCA board with respect to their levy. When we have that information, we will report back to committee as to what the final decision of the board is with respect to the levy as well as the whole appropriation issue and, or sorry, allocation issue. And we would discuss potential next steps with council at that time. We are having discussions, staff are having discussions, City of Hamilton staff with Niagara regional staff, so that we can better understand one another's position with respect to what has been put forward by the, by MPCA staff. So that dialogue is ongoing as well.
Okay, and thank you for that. And the last thing is, my understanding is Haldeman is going with the, we like the new prop, or the, the provincial formula. So I know that they're going to be voting on that shortly. And it would be, Niagara would be nuts not to if you think about it because they're going to be off the hook for about a million bucks. So as soon as you want us to do that, I'd be more than happy to make that motion. So thank you for, I just need that clarified. Thank you.
Stephanie?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Just for clarification, Counsel Collins, did table a motion on that day with respect to the appeal process? It's just pending the outcome of the board decision.
Absolutely. And I didn't know whether or not it was based on the appeal or that we just had to form an opinion. So I didn't know if that was two of the, of the same thing. So I just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Okay, Mike?
So through the deputy mayor, the information with respect to both police and libraries as presented by those organizations at boards and agencies. The only other change in terms of more recent information, Counsel Ferguson was asking the process, how do we continue to provide more recent information? When we developed our forecast, preliminary forecast, you'll see M-PAC, I mean, it's all Property Assessment Corporation. We were assuming a 1.2% increase in the costs. And you'll see in the next slide is, in fact, it is, I believe, a 0.95% increase. So that represents a decrease of about 62,000 from our preliminary forecast. So again, you will be receiving this information. And as we move forward through the process, we will update that 4.4% potential tax increase with all of the additional information. For instance, with respect to the fuel number, I believe that fuel change to 99 cents represents a 0.25% levy reduction. So again, we will come forward near the end of this month with a summary of all the amendments to the preliminary number. So again, with respect to the police budget, that's been approved by the board. With respect to Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority, that will be put forward by the board, we believe, after the 19th of February. Just as a reminder, under boards and agencies, you would have, you would have, for, for those counselors who recall the boards and agencies, organizations being broader than what is before you today, as we've made a change, the change is part of the 15 budget process, organizations like the Art Gallery, Hamilton Philharmonic Opera, Hamilton previously, Festival of Friends, Boris Braat Theater, Quares, they are all coming forward now through the city enrichment fund and not under boards and agencies. So just in case you're curious as to why the number of organizations that's captured under boards and agencies seems shorter than in previous years, we're just noting that change.
So Mike on four, have Counsel Jackson?
Counsel Murray Ferguson would not be pleased with this slide. General Manager Zagerk, he, 11, 12 years ago, moved the big four or five over to boards and agencies because he felt they deserved more prominence. and agencies because he felt they deserved more prominence there. But I'll take that up with the latest member of the family later. Mr. Deputy Mayor, on that point, seriously, on that fourth bullet point, so now will process change because those six before brought delegation status to this table? Will they no longer have delegation status because the City Enrichment Fund is, if you will, a subcommittee of council? Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Mike.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, they will follow the intake process now through the City Enrichment Fund and will no longer be making delegations directly to council through boards and agencies. And you saw that change when we had the boards and agencies, you had the conservation authorities, library and police. Those now represent the agencies that constitute boards and agencies.
So Mike, if one of the six hypothetically, for whatever reason, are feeling like they are, their voice, their request, their ask is not being heard in a favorable way from their perspective, can they apply at this body or would they apply through the City Enrichment Fund process to say, we feel disadvantaged? I'm just trying to, because I'm curious and my interest is, I'm wondering if the six of them realize that how the process has changed and if they are, if you will, disgruntled with whatever amount may be forthcoming, what avenue do they have now to speak to those in authority? Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Mike.
So through the deputy mayor, and I'll just confirm with clerks, is one opportunity for either individuals or agencies is to come forward as a delegation. And so whichever the appropriate standing committee that the City Enrichment Fund reports to, that would be an option for any agencies who would want to provide additional information to committee or address any issues that they may have.
Stephanie, further, please.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, that is correct. Typically, in the past, members, applicants for the Community Partnership Program did not appeal.
That's right.
But for the community enrichment, I'm not sure if there is an appeal process through that policy, and that is a council-approved policy. So that's something that perhaps Mr. Hurtel could provide an email to council with respect to that matter. The grant subcommittee does report up to the Audit Finance and Administration Committee. So if indeed there is an appeal process, it could be done there or an appeal process could possibly be added to the fund policy.
No, thank you very much, Stephanie and Mike, because in the past, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'm not belaboring this, but in the past, these six had a direct conversation with this standing committee, and now they won't. So I'm curious how that's going to unfold, especially if the decision-making at the City Enrichment Fund Subcommittee Table is seen as unfavorable to any of them. So I'll, we'll just wait to see how that story unfolds. Lastly, why is Opera Hamilton still a bullet point up there, Mike? Are they in a state of abeyance or? Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Mike for a comment.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. This is just a summary of the organizations that committee would have seen in the past through boards and agencies.
Oh, okay.
In terms of Opera Hamilton, I'll just remind committee that they did not come forward as part of the 14 budget process.
Okay.
As they were not operating in 2014.
And I was only curious because you had them down for City Enrichment Fund for 2015 and still had them on there. So I just didn't know if it was for paper reasons that you still had them on there.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that would be an error on our behalf. It is my understanding that they are not coming forward through the City Enrichment Fund, nor are they coming forward to the city through, in 2015, asking for any financial support.
Thanks, Mike. I just didn't know what, I want to make sure what the expectations were. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Jackson. Councilor Pearson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And Mike, just, for the viewing public also, can you just elaborate on the MPAC fee? Because that's almost a half percent of our tax, like our tax increase could be as far as a 1% increase.
Right.
So could you just elaborate on what those costs cover? And I know that that represents what goes to MPAC, but there's a portion of that that stays in the municipality for the office here, correct?
So, yeah. So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, in terms of MPAC as a whole, in terms of their fee structure, it's legislated, it's applied equally to all municipalities, I believe. It reflects both assessment and growth numbers, population growth numbers, there's a weighting to the fee structure. In the case of Hamilton for 2015, I believe the fee increases a 0.95% fee. In terms of their investment, absolutely, where they have either leased space or a representation in a community, part of that funding would go towards paying for their leased space and their representation in the community. In the case of Hamilton, they have some leased space up on the mountain. And previously, it was downtown, they moved, relocated. And so part of that funding would be reinvested in, in the case of Hamilton, in both the leased space as well as the human staff, human resources to support the function.
Thank you, Councilor Pearson. Continue, Mike, please.
So with respect to corporate financials, earlier today, Councilor Collins was raising the target with respect to wage gapping and for the newer councilors, by gapping, it really refers to vacancies that we have in year. We actually budget for those vacancies. And so for 2015, we're recommending not changing our budget of approximately $4.54 million. I believe the question was, what did we assume for 2014 and what are we assuming for 2015? You'll see in our 2014 projected actuals is we aren't meeting the target with respect to the $4.5 million. And again, as we move towards February, March of this year, we'll come back with our year-end disposition of surplus or deficit for 2014 and provide some additional information. Just again, for the benefit of all councilors, the variance reports that we provide to General Issues Committee, or sorry, now to AFNA, actually provide some information with respect to our in-year gapping forecast relative to the target. So there is some additional information. What offsets those gapping numbers are where you have a vacancy and you need to support the service is where you use temporary staff, contractual staff or overtime. So what offsets some of those gapping savings are expenditures such as contractual and overtime.
Councilor Pearson?
Deputy Mayor, my apologies. I just want to clarify because we don't have that slide in our presentation, and there was this previous slide that we didn't have. I thought it was just an overview, but Slide 4 and Slide 6, we do not have. I don't know if it's that this information's reflected somewhere else.
Stephanie?
But we do not have it.
No, it's actually a copying error. It was received, I believe, two-sided. So it got put through the wrong way, through the copier. It's also missing from mine.
We will, yeah.
Of course. Oh, yes. And it is on the web as well.
Yeah. Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I apologize. We'll correct that and we'll get to complete presentations. And so with respect to these other line expenditures, I'm going to flip to the next chart because it provides more detail. As it relates to corporate pensions, benefits contingencies, there are some additional salary contingencies over and above what's reflected in employee-related costs that are being presented by the departments. With respect to the WSIB review, staff have reviewed our cost allocations as it relates to WSIB, and we feel comfortable with a reduction of about $1 million in our forecast cost for WSIB. What's offsetting that reduction of about $1 million are some additional costs related to retiree benefits. You may recall, I believe it was 2014, we brought forward the reports where it's a five-year phase in of $360,000 annually for retiree benefits. So again, that's reflected as a pressure under retiree benefits. As well, we reported through AFNA and to council in terms of a more recent actuarial review of our pension liabilities. We have a $1 million pressure, and so that's reflected in the retiree benefits vacation and sick pay. And finally, there's a accumulated sick leave pressure of approximately $360,000. So those represent the components of that $1.665 million in pressures. So that subtotal is approximately $1.9 million. And coming back to this table, that's how we get to that $1.9 million. So we tried to break it down for you into the various components. Corporate initiatives, we discussed earlier with respect to 2015 capital projects that will have operating impacts, both dollars and FDEs in future years. Previous capital-approved projects have an impact on our 2015 budget of approximately $2 million. And so that's reflected under corporate initiatives. There's area rating for parkland purchases, and that represents a pressure of approximately $605,000. So I'll just remind committee members in, as it relates to our area rating policy, where there's a, for instance, a disposition of a school board property or the purchase of a parquet, is that is eligible for area rating and applied to the former municipality. So again, that represents a pressure of approximately $600,000 for 2015. And again, in terms of operating impact to capital, that $2.6 million represents that line in the previous table. With respect to risk management, we have some pressures as it relates to higher premiums and higher administration and vehicle expenses, and that represents about $637,000. Risk management, just for the benefit of committee members, because you'll see it represented in two areas of our budget, is the departments reflect about $6.9 million in risk management-related costs. The balance of the risk management-related costs of $2.7 million is reflected in the corporate financials. So just in case you're confused as to why it's represented in two areas, it's represented both in departmental chargebacks as well in our corporate financials. So in terms of our non-program revenues, you'll see that overall, their forecast do to increase by 1.1%. We're seeing some favorable forecasts in terms of our payments in lieu, as well as our small favorable in terms of the right-of-way, some reductions in our revenue forecasts with respect to tax remissions, the write-offs, or sorry, pressures. And then as it relates to our senior tax credit for 2015, we're recommending an increase just for the benefit of the public and just to remind committee members, there is a policy as it relates to senior tax credit, the income threshold's just short of $34,000. The assessment cap is approximately $370,000, and our tax rebate is approximately $179. That tax rebate is actually indexed on a go-forward basis annually. So again, that represents the formula as well as the eligibility requirements. For 2015, we're forecasting approximately 3,800 eligible participants for the seniors tax credit. So just to give you a sense of the uptake and eligibility for that program. With respect to the Provincial Offenses Act revenues, we are forecasting a reduction of about $770,000. That represents approximately $264,000 in cost of an additional prosecutor, or sorry, cost of additional prosecutors. And again, that was brought forward, I believe, in 2014 in an effort to try to protect our POA revenue base, was that council approved those additional prosecutors. And we are forecasting a, some estimated reductions in our revenues of POA based on historical experience. This is one of those items we will continue to review and come back with some additional information in 2000, or sorry, later this month, as we have a better sense of our actuals for 2014. If we're seeing some favorable year-end numbers is we will update that forecast for you. And hopefully, we do see some favorable revenue forecasts so that we can reduce that reduction in our POA revenue. So just in terms of POA, again, the POA function is funded from POA revenues. This represents the revenues over and above the cost of supporting the POA function. So POA in general provides a tax benefit to Hamilton taxpayers of about, for 2015, we're forecasting about $3.7 million. So over and above that $3.7 million, the cost to support POA revenue, or sorry, that POA function is funded through the revenues.
So Mike, on Slide 9 there, I don't know if you've done it or not, when Councilor Collins had a question.
Mike, with almost, through, Mr. Chairman, with almost all of the line items there, your 215 budget is based on the 14 actuals, saving except for the penalties and interest, which was $11.3 million. We budgeted for 10.5 last year, and we're only budgeting for 10.5 again in 15. Is there something that stands out there that would prevent us from moving that number up? Or was there a one-time payment from someone who we don't anticipate paying again in 15? How does that work?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, the penalty and interest, it is absolutely a discussion we can have at subsequent committee meetings whether to increase it. What we've noticed with respect to our penalties and interest relative to our comparator groups, we have a relatively higher level of arrears, penalty and interest. And we, you'll see in our enhancements, we want to make some concerted efforts to try to reduce our penalties and interest. And why do we want to reduce our penalties and interest if they have the impact of reducing the net levy is it's a risk? Whenever you have arrears with penalties and interest, you want to try to manage that number. So in an effort to try to bring that number to a percentage that's more reflective of our comparative municipalities, you'll see an enhancement to do some additional communication with those property owners who are in arrears in an effort to try to reduce that percentage who are in arrears. That would reduce our penalty and interest. So the council's correct, when we look at 2014 actuals, we're higher than budget. Do we want to be there? I would suggest no. We would want to reduce those arrear numbers. However, if we don't see the response that we would hope for from the additional engagement and communication with property owners, that would be a number that we would consider bringing back up to a historical average.
Thank you. Did we do the same last year? Was 10.5 reflected on the actual or?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I believe in 2014, we had a annualized, you may recall, back in 2008, '09, as a result of the recession, we made an effort, concerted effort to reduce the penalty and interest rate from 15% effective to 12%. And we brought that back up based on the fact that we saw some economic prosperity. So I think last year, you would have seen this number increase in part because of the full annualized impact. We did it in '13, the full annualized, I believe, in 2014. So it did increase in 2014 in part because we increased the rate back up to 15%.
And does the same logic then hold true for tax remissions and write-offs?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, so for 2014, we have some large industrial that we expect will be booking for 2014. And so for 2015, we don't expect that same level of risk with respect to tax remissions and write-offs. So again, we'll be reviewing, I mentioned earlier, in terms of our assessment growth when we come back at the end of this month with respect to a updated forecast for assessment growth, we will look at the potential risk around our tax remissions and write-offs as well. So again, we will provide additional information later this month on that, that figure.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike, and can you just pause for one minute? We're going to go back to Councilor Jackson's question about boards and agencies. Stephanie's got some information.
Here, Mr. Chairman, yes. I was able to look it up online, and I can read to you what was approved in the terms of reference for the City Enrichment Fund. The groups that were transferred through the approval of Appendix A to that report were the Art Gallery of Hamilton, Boris Braat Music Festival, Festival of Friends in the Hamilton, oh, sorry, Hamilton Philharmonic Orchestra and Theater Aquarius. Council approved those through the appendix to that report, so those now belong under the City Enrichment Fund. And there is no current appeal process. However, staff apparently is working on that as well.
Thank you, Stephanie. Councilor Pearson?
Thank you. Appreciate that information. And who determines, is it a subcommittee that's the enrichment, that does the enrichment fund review and distributes that funding?
That, the City Enrichment Fund, I'm sorry, through, Mr. Chairman, is the same, is report similar to the Community Partnership? reports similar to the Community Partnership Program. They still report to the grand subcommittee. The reporting structure hasn't changed, only the program itself was changed.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Mike, please continue.
So, just in terms of the additional revenues, you'll see the hydro dividend and other interest. And again, just for the benefit of committee members, you'll recall that we assumed $2 million in hydro dividends over and above the $5.3 million to support our capital budget. So, we assumed $2 million annually in our hydro dividends to support capital. Investment income, we assume approximately $4.1 million in investment income. And on Friday, we have some information as to our performance of our investments in 2014 that were favorable relative to our benchmarks. Slot revenues, you'll see that we continue to forecast $5.1 million, even though our 2014 actuals was just short of that at $4.8 million. So, again, we aren't recommending a change at this time. You'll recall that the formula changed in terms of the revenue sharing with slot revenues, and again, in 2014, that was our first full year. Under the new formula, we aren't suggesting at this time a change for 2015. And, sorry, finally, the POAs I discussed previously, there's two factors in terms of some enhanced prosecutors, as well as some lower-than-forecast revenues for 2015. So, again, similar to my message to Councillor Ferguson with respect to updates, with, in terms of these revenues and expenditures, we will be coming forward throughout, through the balance of our budget process with any additional updates or information. As well, we'll be bringing forward additional information, as I committed to previously, with respect to our assessment growth in 2014, and we hope to have something more positive than the 1% that we've assumed for 2015, sorry. And that's the end of the presentation, and if there's any additional questions, staff would be available to answer.
Thank you, Mike. Don't have any committee members, any other questions? No? Okay. Motion received in presentation, Councillor Partridge, Councillor Pearson, all in favor? Thank you. I believe that's the end of presentations. Motions, we don't have any motions, because we, those are pulled back. Notices of motion, no notices of motion. Any items of general information or other business? Seeing none, motion to adjourn, Councillor Vanderbeek and Councillor Partridge. All in favor of adjourned?
Yes.
Opposed?
Yes.
Thank you.